Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 26th, 6:30 PM. Call to meeting to order at 6:30. All councilors are present and the city administrator is present. Like to invite everyone to join the council in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on to item four under general, we have an Arbor Week proclamation. The city of Saco is pleased to announce that we have been designated a Tree City USA city for the 10th year in a row by the Arbor Day Foundation. The Tree City USA program has been greening up cities and towns across America since 1976. It is a nationwide movement that provides the framework necessary for communities to manage and expand their public trees. Saco joins a select number of cities and towns in the state of Maine that share this recognition. I will now read the official Arbor Week proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas in 1978, the state of Maine first celebrated Arbor Week during the third full week of May. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, William P. Doyle, Mayor of Saco, do hereby proclaim that May 18th through May 22nd was the celebration of Arbor Week. I urge all citizens in Saco to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Second, under general, I just would like to do a quick thank you for all their hard work. I would like to thank Communications Director Emily Roy and Communications Specialist Andrew Dickinson for their work in collaboration with Mayor Cassavant from the city of Bitterford and several other organizations on their work on the Memorial Day Virtual Ceremony that was held yesterday. Everyone did a great job and it was really a tribute. And I just want to say thank you to those folks that worked hard to make that happen. Moving on to item five, committee correspondence to council. Are there any committee correspondence? I see Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mayor. This past weekend on Saturday, I was able to volunteer with Saco Main Street, planting the flowers on Main Street. Rob Biggs has filled the self-watering containers with water to start them out. And hopefully, we are, can work out a solution to have them watered every couple of weeks.
Thank you, Counselor McPhail. Any further committee correspondence to council? Seeing no further committee correspondence to council, we now move on to item six, which is public comment. City Administrator Canrath, have you received any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one piece of public comment. I'll read that now for the record.
Thank you.
Okay. This comes to us from Barbara Coleman, 386 Buxton Road, Saco. Barbara writes, "The budget detail as provided is not user-friendly for the average individual. Issues exist with the motions in the packet. It is hard to have a balanced budget when the original document is not updated accordingly for the most important meeting of the year, the budget." Secondly, I am disappointed to see the reduction of two firefighters/ENTs from the additions originally requested. During this period in history, these individuals need to be hired for the protection of the city staff and the community at large. These dollars, these are dollars which will be well-spent. Additionally, this is the year when the budget process should have been delayed until after July 1st in order to see where the city stands financially, as well as the state of Maine. Thank you all for all you do during this difficult time. Barbara Coleman.
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. With that being the only pre-submitted committee or public comment, at this time, I would like to invite anybody participating, if they would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform and we will call upon you to, to talk. So again, if you would like to speak in public comment before the council, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom platform. I see a hand raised from Mr. John Harkins, it looks like. Mr. John Harkins, you have been allowed to talk, so please unmute your microphone and then begin with your name and address for the record.
John Harkins, work of the terror of Saco. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Great. I find that this budget is very confusing. It should be rejected, sent back, cleaned up, so the taxpayer can follow it. We reviewed this budget extensively, found that it could be flat, if not reduced, over the current year budget. I don't see any reason to rush into adopting this budget this evening. As far as the Board of, School Board is concerned, we can take at least $900,000 off of that budget. It's too heavy. There are a lot of people unemployed right now and it's time to show some restraint. I think the budget tonight should be standalone at a meeting. We've loaded up the agenda once again so that the budget process, which is encumbered now because of lack of onsite public participation. We need to clean this program up throughout the rest of the items on the agenda, concentrate on the budget, have a special meeting, and have it later on, maybe late June or July. There's no need to rush into it at this time. Those are my comments. I'm really disappointed in the presentation of this year's budget. It's too cumbersome. There's a lot to be revamped. And you should have received spreadsheets attesting to this fact and additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the council in the public comments section? If so, please raise your hand and you will be called upon to speak. We have a raised hand from LCGM. You have been allowed to talk, so please, for the record, cite your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Lindsay McNautin. I reside at 11 Overlook Drive in Saco. Full disclosure, I am a teacher with the Saco School System, but that's actually not what I want to talk about. I am a mother of three. I have a fifth grader, a third grader, and a first grader. The teachers this year have done a pretty amazing job. The turnaround was pretty fantastic. The collaboration and the projects that my kids are doing are so beautiful. I can't even tell you how proud I am, really truly proud. The one thing I wanted to bring up, there's been a lot of people discussing the budget and taxes. And while I completely understand that, my husband and I chose to move here to this address 11 years ago. And we chose to move to Saco, where I grew up, after having lived elsewhere, both in Maine and out, because we wanted to go to school here. We wanted our kids to go to school here. We wanted to come back to a place that valued our school system, that valued and put money into our children and their future. We chose Saco because we thought that was the type of community we were in. And I hope that we continue to do that. I know there are a lot of towns who do much higher than we do. I'd like you guys to consider that there are a lot of families and a lot of moms that I've talked to who are disappointed that we don't put more into our schools and into our education. Because that's really why all of us young families moved here. There have been a few times where we have questioned, did we make the right decision to moving to Saco? We want to live in a town that puts education first. And yes, I am a teacher, so I also believe that. But I also want my kids to go to school in a town that puts education first. So I would like you to consider, not just the people who are opposing taxes, but the families, the moms and the dads and the kids who want to put the education first, who want the education system to be the number one priority. That's what we'd like. So thank you for listening. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment to address the city council? If so, please raise your hand and you'll be called upon to speak. Last call for public comment. Seeing no hands raised and no one seeking recognition to speak before the council on public comment. Now moving on to the approval of the minutes. Item seven, there are no minutes to approve. At this time, we'll move on to item eight, which is consent items, and that is consent item A through E. A being the reappointment of Bruce Kearns to Board of Assessment and Review. B, reappointment of Rick Mallard to Coastal Waters Commission. C, appointment of Tony LeBlanc to the Lucian Kimball Deering Trust Board. D, appointment of Perrion Carpenter to the Saco Shoreline Commission. And E, appointment of Michael King to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Counselor Copeland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion?
I would just like to say that I appreciate and the city appreciates all these citizens stepping up and helping out. It's fantastic and you're appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. With that, any other comments? Seeing no other comments, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Moving on to item nine, action items. We have item A, the second and final credit enhancement agreement between the city of Saco, Maine and Aduwe Pile. I believe that is Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. A credit enhancement agreement for Aduwe Pile Incorporated is being presented for consideration. This application is for the CEA that will be part of the existing TIF number seven, Spring Hill Omnibus Tax Increment Financing District. The credit enhancement agreement will be for 13 years with the following terms. Aduwe Pile will receive 100% of the TIF revenues and the city will receive 0% of the TIF revenues for the entirety of the CEA. The CEA was reviewed by the Economic Development Commission at their April 13th, 2020 meeting, recommended to go to the city council for first reading and public hearing. The council ordered for this credit enhancement agreement, which will be part of the first reading held on April 21st, 2020, the public hearing held on May 18th, 2020, and the second and final reading withheld today, May 26th, 2020, will be as follows. The city administrator is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Aduwe Pile in substantially the form as presented to the city council. I move that the city council, that the city administrator is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Aduwe Pile in substantially the form as presented to the city council.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Menthorn. Any discussion? I see two hands raised, Counselor Archer, then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for everybody who's reading this out there and they look at this document, I just wanted to point out there that, yes, you are reading 100% of the tax credits going to the company and 0% is being retained by the city. However, I wanted to let you know that it is only a 13-year compared to a 30-year. So we have looked at and that was considered.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I considered not speaking on this at all, but I had, found it hard to keep my mouth quiet. Like, I understand the back history where it would appear as though a former city employee kind of had put a current city employee into a rough spot as far as having potentially previously agreed to a credit enhancement. That had never come before council. I guess my issue is 100% on any credit enhancement is really unacceptable to me. It sets a precedent. And again, I understand this is, I guess, an attempt to correct a previous mistake. But for me, I would, I would ask council to seriously consider, as I have in the past, taking a closer look at or actually creating a TIF policy that sets true procedures and not just guidelines for how we administer these things. And that way, we don't have future 100% tips or credit enhancements. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes 6-1. Moving on to item B, adoption of communicable disease expanded FMLA and FF-CRA emergency sick leave provisions. And that is the Family First, Families First Care Act, Corona Relief Act, sorry. Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Federal action has mandated the creation of new sick and FMLA policies to accommodate extenuating circumstances of our employees may encounter due to the spread of COVID-19 in the United States. Be it ordered that the city council adopts the following policies. Saco Communicable Disease Policy, Saco Expanded FMLA Policy, Saco FF-CRA Emergency Sick Leave Policy. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Copeland. Any discussion? Seeing no hands raised and no counselors seeking recognition. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Moving on to item C, first reading, adoption of revised MMA General Assistance Ordinance. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me one second. The city of Saco currently uses the General Assistance Ordinance dated 13, which was provided by the Maine Municipal Association. MMA currently has a new GA ordinance dated August 2019, which contains revisions and updates to state law. The city of Saco hereby moves to repeal the MMA General Assistance Ordinance dated September 2013 and to adopt the MMA General Assistance Ordinance dated August 2019. And further moves to set a public hearing from Monday, June 8th, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Archer, second by Counselor Copeland. Any discussion? We'll see, no hands raised, no counselors seeking recognition for discussion. Move to a roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to item D, wave of interest penalties and extension of lien filings. Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In Executive Order Number 53, Governor Mills allowed municipalities to delay the issuance of 30-day notices for lien filings on properties with delinquent taxes until 60 days after the state of emergency is terminated. This allows municipalities to delay the filing of lien certificates on properties with delinquent taxes for fiscal year 2020 until 90 days after the emergency order is terminated. Furthermore, the original wave of interest penalties issued by city council was written to expire when city hall reopened to the public. Council has expressed a desire to extend the grace period on late interest penalties until the state of emergency is terminated. Be it ordered that the city tax collector delay the issuance of 30-day notions, notices on lien filings until 60 days after the state of emergency is terminated and that the city tax collector delay the filing of liens against properties with delinquent taxes for fiscal year 2020 until 90 days after the state of emergency is terminated and that interest penalties on late tax payments be waived on all taxes paid by mail and postmarked from June 1st, 2020 until the date that the state of emergency is terminated and that interest penalties on late tax payments be waived on late taxes paid by Dropbox or in person from May 27th, 2020 until the date that the state of emergency is terminated and that a credit card and e-check fees continue to be waived on tax payments received online from May 27th, 2020 until the date that the state of emergency is terminated. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Menthorn. Any discussion? Seeing, seeing no counselors hand raised and no counselors seeking recognition for discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to item E, adoption of the amended fee schedule for fiscal year 2021. I believe it's Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council establishes and proves all fees and charges required by ordinances policies in the city of Saco. This includes permits, licenses, approvals, and applications as well as fees and charges collected by the city of Saco that are authorized by state law or require the city to set the amounts of such fees and charges. The council may establish any new fee or charges that the council deems necessary or appropriate to offset the cost of operating programs, delivering services, or administrating any ordinances or policies. Those fees shall be included in the fee schedule and updated on, as needed basis. Be it ordered that the city council approve the amended fee schedule for fiscal year 2020, I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Archer, second by Counselor Menthorn. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to adopt the fee schedule. I would like to put forward an amendment to the fee schedule to correct the following fees. Removal or installation of underground fuel tanks of 500 gallons or more, demolition of accessory buildings, demolition of single or two-family buildings, demolition of commercial industrial buildings. I would also like to add specific building permit fees with solar construction to reduce the cost for homeowners and developers of investing in clean energy. 1 to 10 panels, $45, 11 to 50 panels, $100, over 51 panels, $200. Be it ordered that the city council correct the building permit fees removed in error from the fee schedule and furthermore, that new building permit fees be established to incentivize investment in solar energy.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland for the amendment. The amendment has been seconded by Counselor Menthorn. Discussion on the amendment, which is the late addition of some erroneous deletions that were made in the previous document. So that is what we are voting on. Counselor Johnston has his hand up. We'll go to Counselor Johnston.
My comments were prior to this, so.
Okay. The motion has been amended. Any discussion on the amended piece? All right, we will take a vote on the amendment that Counselor Copeland has read. And once that's completed, if that's successful, we'll take a vote on the main motion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. We are now to the main motion, the adoption of the amended fee schedule for fiscal year 2021. A discussion on the main motion. Counselor Johnston, do you have?
So several years ago, I had amended this fee schedule to include free parking for veterans. I don't see that on here anymore, so I'm just questioning if that's still in place. It currently has age 62-plus for free residential parking permit.
Counselor Johnston, for everyone's benefit, those watching at home, can you refer to the page that you're, that you're looking at in the document? The budget?
In the packet, it's page 182.
182, thank you.
Yeah. Guess it's page eight of the fee schedule. So I'm just questioning if that's still in place or do I need to do another amendment? I don't remember. It probably was three, three years ago, maybe four.
Glennis Salas has her hand raised, so can we have Glennis promoted to panelist? Welcome and good evening, Finance Director Salas. How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Have you, did you hear the question that was, that was asked by Counselor Johnston?
I did, Mr. Mayor. My knowledge, we have not issued complimentary parking passes to veterans since I've started. So this would be, I don't know about the fee schedule prior to when I started, but this is the first I've heard of it. So an amendment would need to be made to implement that for this coming fiscal year.
Okay.
Thank you, Glennis.
Like I said, in the past, we were doing that. It was probably your first year on council, Mr. Mayor. I believe that I had made that amendment during the budget to add, you know, free parking permit for veterans of any age. And I know several that had obtained them, so they were issuing, I don't know, that way. So I guess if I need to make an amendment, I would move that we allow, we issue complimentary permits for veterans of any age.
So there's been a second amendment to provide complimentary free parking for veterans of any age made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Is this amending?
Mr. Mayor?
Is this amending what's currently in the document that we're admitting? If you go to page 419 of the fee schedule, 178, 118, 25, provides residential permit parkings to disabled veterans from the use of May 1st to Columbus State Weekend for free. And that's being admitted out of this, omitted out of this current motion. The original motion.
The original motion. That's four of 19 of the fee schedule, or 178 in totality.
Oh, I do see what Councilor Archer is talking, is mentioning, and that is an oversight when I migrated parking permits from being solely Chapter 118 permits to being 211, because they would apply also to the train station. I did fail to bring this particular parking permit over with it, and anecdotally, I hadn't heard about the disabled veterans, but I certainly think it's a worthy amendment to bring that back into what is now the updated and expanded parking permit, but still complimentary.
Thank you for the explanation, Glenis. So, Councilor Johnston, it is there, but it's looked to be in strike through, so you want to amend that to remove the strike through, to keep the provision, and, and do you want to, is it also your intention to expand that beyond disabled veteran to all veterans?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Second.
That motion has been made by Councilor Johnston, second by Councilor Copeland. Councilor Archer, thank you for the finding that strike through language. So, with that.
You know I'm paying attention.
Good catch.
So, with that, the amendment is to remove the strike through on Chapter 118, Section 25, Residential Parking Permits, Disabled Veteran Use of Parking plot from May 1 to Columbus Day weekend, and then expand upon that to make it all veterans moving forward. Any discussion on? Seeing no discussion, no councilors with their hands raised or seeking recognition, we call for a roll call vote. Councilor Archer.
As three of us are veterans, we need permission from the council, just because obviously we'll benefit from it, so.
I.
Thank you, I'm all set with that.
Are there any objections to the, to the veterans on council voting?
No objections.
Seeing no objections, a call for a roll call vote, Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Copeland.
Yes, and thank you for your service.
Councilor Menthorn.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Moving on, we are now at the main motion again, main motion. Any amendments, any further amendments or discussion on the main motion? Seeing no councilors seeking recognition and no hands raised, we will move on to the roll call vote. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Copeland.
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
That motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item F, Adoption of the Fiscal Year 2021 Water Resource Recovery Department Budget. Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fiscal year 2021 operating budget for the Water Resource Recovery Division is $2,835,554, which is supported by a sewer user fee rate of $4.96 per unit. Be it ordered that the City Council adopt the fiscal year 2021 Water Resource Recovery Divisional Budget for the city of Saco Maine as follows. Approve gross expenditures of $2,835,554 to be offset by $2,835,554 in anticipated revenue and other credits, which represents no increase in the sewer user fee rate of $4.96. I move to approve the order.
Second. Motion, excuse me, motion's been made by Councilor McPhail, second by Councilor Menthorn. Seeing no hands raised and no councilors seeking recognition for discussion, call for a roll call vote. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Copeland.
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item G, City Operations Budget, Main Motion. The Choice of Technology.
It's me.
Councilor Archer, thank you.
No, it's Councilor Menthorn.
Oh, Councilor Menthorn, sorry.
Not a problem. Okay, on March 30, 2020, the city administrator presented his fiscal year 2021 budget. The council met with departments and agencies to review and discuss budgets and workshops through April. Be it ordered, the City Council move to approve the appropriation order for the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget excluding all school, county, and TIF transfers per Section 6.06 and 6.07 of the Charter of the City of Saco Maine as follows. Approve gross municipal expenditures of $31,534,913, expenditures to be offset by $31,534,913, in anticipated revenue and other credits, which represents $2,89,581 in anticipated state revenue sharing, and $11,511,610 in other local revenues, except those revenues received from the state for homestead exemptions and bedding reimbursement, with the net to be raised by local taxes. And further be it ordered, the approved amount set in the following attached schedule titled City of Saco FY 2021 Appropriation Order shall become part of the city clerk's records and shall designate the form of the City of Saco budget for the fiscal year 2021 is authorized under Section 6.04 of the Charter of the City of Saco Maine. And further approve those appropriations as determined necessary and appropriate by the city administrator and/or designee from those special revenue funds where available and corresponding with the estimates presented for approval in the city administrator's budget book, or as adjusted and presented to the council during the course of the budget deliberations. I move to approve the order.
Second. Motion's, motion's been made by Councilor Menthorn, second by Councilor Archer. We are now at the point where we have the budget main motion for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Copeland.
Um, I don't have that page in my packet.
You don't have page 196?
196 is Councilor Archer's amendment.
There's been two modified packets. Are you on the 4:00 PM packet that was sent today? I noticed.
No, no, I'm not, because I work until 5:00. This is ridiculous. I, how many times do we say that the final packets have to be out on Thursday? This 4 o'clock on Monday stuff is not working. So, now I haven't even read this. This is important stuff we're doing. This is unacceptable.
City Administrator Kendra.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say, from the perspective of city staff, there were several late-minute changes, additions, other things that came through regarding the budget process, and because of those, a modified packet had to be sent out, out of the alley.
Without us being able to vet it. I haven't read this. I don't know what your changes are, and I don't think that we should be voting on something that we, that just came out at 4 o'clock, and we haven't had a chance to even look at it.
Councilor Copeland, would you like to make an amendment to table the budget?
In fact, I would. This is, this is the biggest decision that we make all year, and to have things come up at 4 o'clock in the afternoon and talking about gross municipal expenditures of $31 million, and I can't even reconcile that, I, yes, I absolutely want to table this. I can't believe that after this weekend, preparing and doing all this, that this comes up at the last minute. It is entirely frustrating. I move to table the budget.
Second.
Damn it.
There's been a, a motion to table by Councilor Copeland, second by Councilor Archer. Roll call vote. Hold on, we can discuss. I believe on a motion to table, there's no discussion, it's a motion to table.
That's correct.
So, with, with a motion to table, we'll call for a roll call vote. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy. Councilor Gunn.
No.
Councilor Copeland.
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn.
No.
Councilor McPhail.
No.
And Councilor Johnston.
I don't know how you guys can go forward with this.
Councilor Copeland, please. Councilor Johnston. Motion fails five-two. Motion to table fails. With that, we have Councilor Gunn who's had his hand raised, and then we have a couple other councilors, Councilor Menthorn, Purdy, and Johnston. Councilor Gunn.
Yes, I just thought it would be helpful to direct to the city administration that, given that, I don't think this was a huge issue, but I understand completely Councilor Copeland's frustration, that if there is any late-minute additions to the agenda that included altered agendas up to the last minute, you all have our phone numbers, and we should not have to like rely on having to check our email until the last second before meeting, I think a phone call from city administration would be a courtesy, and so this does not happen again. I'd like you to seriously consider that, Brian Kendra, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gunn. City Administrator Kendra.
Sure, I'd just like to say, you know, I share a lot of these same thoughts, and I think we really should adhere to, let's say, Thursday at 4:00 PM for any changes, additions, anything else submitted to the packets, whether that's from city staff, or that's from a councillor, the mayor, whoever, there are no further additions to the packet 4:00 PM Thursday, that's it. Because we get into this situation all the time where we have all of these, you know, last-minute requests and everything else, and it turns into this. So, I would like to put forward, and I think we should be doing this anyway, let's say 4:00 PM on Thursday, no new additions to the packet, and if, if there is going to be, then that item will have to wait until the following week. So, I think that would be an easy way to do this, to, to avoid this situation from happening, because I will say it's equally as, as difficult for, for us on the city staff side to be scrambling at the last minute trying to prepare these things, I have commentaries and agendas to get them out in time for the meeting. So, I think if we can be all on the same page and say Thursday 4:00 PM, we won't run into this issue again. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kendra. Next up, we have Councilor Menthorn. Councilor Menthorn, you're muted.
Sorry about that. One of the things that I was pointing out earlier today, which led to one of those last-minute changes, was the fact that we have not received the school budget back from the school board. It's now in their hands, not ours. Because of that, I requested a council resolve mirroring the earlier resolve we did, which pushed the budget meeting from early May till today. This pushes it back to as late as June 15. So, at some point tonight, we will be reading this resolve and voting on it, because we can't vote for a school budget that we don't have technically, because we sent it back. So, my suggestion and why I voted no on your tabling motion, Lynn, is I think there's a lot of stuff here we can get through tonight, and then when we reach that point where we no longer feel comfortable, if there are items, we can table those, because we're going to have to do this resolve anyway for the school budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Menthorn. Councilor Purdy, then Councilor Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to point out that the, the, the version that, the update number two that came out at 4:00 PM was simply changing some dates that were wrong in the, in the Aduwe pile CEA. That was the only changes to that, some of the dates were punched and wrong. Beyond that, everything else was the same.
Not from the version that I was working on.
Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To go back to, just because we kind of got, we went off of what Brian had mentioned, City Administrator. Our past council had kind of come to that agreement of that, that deadline, however, back then I even made the, it was an emotion, but it was a, a suggestion that there would be a process in which emergency orders can still come up, in which those amendments after the Thursday deadline would be decided by council to constitute an emergency or not, but we still need to have that flexibility of emergency orders, so that we're not necessarily delaying items that are of that emergent nature. I think that maybe this should be written up to go change and amend our council rules and order, order business to add this language specifically in our rules of order.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Archer. City Administrator Kendra.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank Councilor Archer for saying that, because I was thinking the same thing, that something along these lines should be written up, and I think included in our rules of procedure, and that may clear up this issue in the future, but it may be important also, as, as Marshall just said, to allow emergency items to come forward, but otherwise adhere strictly to a, we'll say Thursday 4 or 5:00 PM deadline, so thank you for that.
Thank you, City Administrator Kendra. Just so everyone's aware, I was looking at the rules and order of business at this moment from the January 6 packet that came out and was approved by council for that exact language, because I believe it was talked about where we would not hear new information that came to us on Mondays. So, with that said, I think there was some ideas that were looked at, and again, need to be looked at. The, the version that I have of the May 26 packet online, that I got today, does have page 196 in it, that Councilor Copeland seemed to, does not have page 196. So, we do have to make sure that clarification, moving forward, that we have those documents, and I think one way to do that is to look at really holding fast to a deadline, and if that means slowing things down, we slow things down. That's, that's, that will have to be part of the process moving forward. So, with that, Councilor Copeland.
Well, you mentioned that I didn't have page 196. I do, it's just different. The two amendments that came, one came afternoon, and then the other one came around 4:00. So, those two were not considered over the weekend when I was going through the packet and making sure everything was as put. I mean, with this motion that's before us on the adoption, maybe people could explain to me why they're adding $31 million of municipal expenditures, then, you know, but just to read it and just to vote it, I'm not doing that.
Is, is Glenis, Finance Director Salas still with us on the, as a panelist?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm here.
Finance Director Salas, did you hear Councilor Copeland's question?
Yes, so if I could clarify, this is the main motion, the $31,534,913 represents the total municipal portion of the budget for fiscal of the budget for fiscal year 2021. The second page, which is the exhibit to the main motion, includes the supporting detail, your fiscal year 2021 appropriation order. The $31,534,913 is comprised of the total expenditures by department as detailed in that exhibit. The reason that we've structured this main motion in this way is that council only has authority to appropriate funds for municipal expenditures. The city council cannot appropriate funds for county tax or TIF transfers. The school appropriation is separated from this main motion because the school budget is adopted in separate motions which are later on in the agenda. So it's not an increase or anything. That just is what the municipal budget is for fiscal year 2021 as presented by the city administrator, and then amendments are to follow.
Okay, so that is just basically back to his, okay. Well, without any time to see it, I just needed to understand it better. So that's the, on the mill rate calculator spreadsheet, that's the administrator's budget.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas for explaining that question that Councilor Copeland had. With that, do we have any amendments to the main motion? We have an item, we have an item GI or G1 amendments to city operation budget. We have Councilor Archer as a resource. Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put forward an amendment to the city administrator's budget that reduces state revenue sharing, motor vehicle excise, and ambulance revenues to reflect economic uncertainty, and that furthermore includes expenditure reductions in new revenues sufficient to offset revenue loss plus additional cuts totaling $283,014. This, oh, there's, this motion includes a limiting overlay intended to return a portion of proceeds from the sale, no, sorry. We have a correction towards this in the sense of not selling 12 School Street, which I made clear last meeting. And I just, I just recognized it again that it was still in there.
I gotta, Councilor Archer, if I may?
Yes, please do.
I do apologize. The background was not updated, however, the actual.
The motion was, yeah, those are all clear. I reviewed that and I didn't review this one section here. So it's just.
I apologize for that.
So I'll restart for clarity. I would like to forward an amendment to the city administrator's budget that reduces state revenue sharing, motor vehicle excise, and ambulance revenues to reflect economic uncertainty, and that furthermore includes exponential reductions in new revenues sufficient to offset revenue loss. Be it ordered, city council, decrease account 10131330504 state revenue sharing, decrease that by $417,916. $417,916, sorry about that. And decrease account 100020300201 motor exercise vehicle by $394,496. Decrease account 10342 and 300951 transfer from ambulance fund by $200,200,200,200,287,000. Sorry about that. Increase account, no. Admit, decrease 1063050081 overlay to fund balance by $360,454. Decrease account 1068150095207101 energy efficiency upgrades by $9,375. Decrease account 1068150095205310 vehicle reimbursement by $15,000. Decrease account 1068150095203742 local road drainage replacement by $50,000. Decrease account 1068150095207117 exterior finishes by $75,000. Decrease account 1068150095207118 HVAC component replacements by $50,000. Decrease account 1068150095207116 interior finishes by $75,000. Decrease account 1068150095207115 life safety and code compliance updates by $50,000. Decrease account 1068150095203755 landfill maintenance by $40,000. Decrease account 1068150095203774 collective road safety improvements by $50,000. Decrease account 1068150095203722 industrial park railroad maintenance, RR, which I believe is railroad maintenance, by $10,000. Increase account 10340300964 single transfers of, by $117,547.
May I ask a clarifying question?
I did not include in this, yes, I did not include increased account 10270 sale. I believe that was being amended.
Yes, so I had prepared an amendment to remove 509 Buxton Road from this amendment, but you are preemptively simply removing sale of 193, okay. 509 Buxton, okay.
There should be no increases in this, except for the last one of the single transfer.
Okay, understood.
Thank you, Councilor Archer. So the, Councilor Archer has made an amendment to decrease several line items and expenditures, revenues and expenditures, and then increase a line item. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Councilor Gunn. So now discussion on the amendment, amendment only, not, not the main motion, amendment only. Councilor Copeland, then Councilor Johnson, then Councilor Menthorn. Councilor Copeland?
I would like a description of what these decreases impact. Can we, the city administrator or his directors help with that?
Finance Director Salas, are you available to answer that question?
Certainly. So the reduction, so all of these reductions, let's start with 10681. So that would be most of the last section of this amendment. Those are all capital deferments per Director Fox's recommendation. The other decrease, the 1063050801, the overlay account was used as a mechanism to return a portion of the sale of the old public works facility to the unassigned fund balance, which is part of the agreement when council appropriated fund balance for the construction of the new public works facility in fiscal year 2020. However, it is an opportunity, rather than returning the additional proceeds above remaining costs, the city council can use those proceeds simply to offset taxes in fiscal year 2021, again, in light of these projected revenue losses. The last item, increasing account 1034030964, that's a transfer revenue. Essentially, there were unused funds related to a particular capital project. Those are being returned to the general fund, again, to offset having to levy taxes.
My question was more about some of the decreases on the local road drainage, exterior finishes, HVAC component replacements, and life safety and code compliance updates.
For a more detailed review of the implications of these reductions, I would defer to Public Works Director Fox. Is he on?
We promoted him. Andrew, can you promote Pat Fox?
There you go. Mr. Mayor, Council.
Pat?
Good evening, Director Fox. How are you? Thank you for joining us this evening. Did you happen to hear the question from Councilor Copeland of a more detailed analysis of some of these decreased line items such as exterior finishes, HVAC component, interior finishes, life safety, and code compliance updates?
Yeah, most of, most of the funding of these line items, we used to itemize, if you go back five or six years ago, we used to itemize every little project or road we were going to touch within the capital plan. As the capital plan became more robust, we broke it out into these project categories, so like energy efficiency improvements, rather than list each improvement that we might do to, rather than list 15 or 16 projects, we just grouped them together. So all of these are existing categories that we have money in right now to continue to do the project we're working on. Obviously, over the last few months, some of the capital improvements that we had ongoing have taken a backseat to just keeping operations and adapting to our new environment. So there is money to continue capital improvements at all of our facilities over the next, over the coming year just with the balances that we have in the current capital plan. As you know, these, these accounts typically span two or three years to actually bring projects to fruition. So in the past, we've cut the capital plan across the board, across all line items. This year, I circulated a list of a little bit more strategic deferments to all of the other department heads. We didn't have as many capital plan committee meetings as we liked, but city staff has seen this, reviewed the list, and they're mostly from accounts that we already have ongoing project funds to continue what we're doing.
Thank you very much.
I will say, I will just add that it's really because of the council's funding of the capital plan over the last five to 10 years, from when it zeroed out to building it up to what it is today, that we're, we're able to do these without any truly detrimental effects to our infrastructure.
Thank you, Director Fox. Thank you, Councilor Copeland. With that, we have Councilor Johnson.
So I, as the Finance Director had indicated, I had an amendment that was going to remove the revenue of 509 Buxton Road, instead recognize a portion of the sale of 90 Temple, and also allocate 5,000 of the proceeds towards HPC. How does this fit in now?
My recommendation would be, let's let this amendment pass. And then, Councilor Johnson, you would actually increase the sale of city account by the projected amount of 90 Temple Street. So if you want me to send you that amendment, I can do that, or maybe you want to wait and see if it's.
Yeah, we can move forward the way you suggested. You can send it to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Menthorn?
Pat, on really the life safety stuff, the Hy-Vac stuff, and these finishes of, if we take 250,000 out of those four accounts, are we going to be putting ourselves in a situation where if we need something, we're going to experience a delay needing to come to council to get the money to cover it?
There, I would certainly point out or highlight if I felt like there were any critical needs. We've gone over this with our facility director. There's always projects you can work on. There's always stuff we can fix and repair and replace, but there, there are no items in, we've updated a lot of our security systems over the last few years. We're just coming off the passage of three significant bond questions that put a lot of money into our infrastructure. We had $13 million going to city infrastructure the last couple of years in addition to our regular capital plan. I do not feel that this is putting any projects in jeopardy. We would have time to come to you with a budget amendment if we felt the need for something to come up. And like I said, we could still, we still have available funds to cancel some preventative maintenance and do emergency repairs within the current capital plan.
Okay, I just have a concern that if we're cutting too deep, then we're going to end up burying ourselves every week, having an amendment in front of us this week and another one next week, and so on and so forth throughout the year. And probably not the best use of our time to cut on one end and then add it back that much more on the other if we just leave it alone. I understand our directive and communicated through Brian. I'm just curious if we're going too deep and going to create that situation sooner rather than later.
I think as long as, as long as we're clear on why we're making this decision, we would certainly want to restore the capital plan next year. But, and I, you know I'm the first to advocate for putting money into our infrastructure, but I do feel that this year these will be, will be okay. We'll be okay with this. We'll still be able to carry out a lot of good work and still have the money to put into our infrastructure for immediate needs, but we would need to restore it.
Well, and that's my concern is that if next year we see this 25% reduction in, in revenue from the state and other revenues correspondingly dropping, are we digging ourselves too deep of a hole now and maybe what we should be doing is maybe not going as deep now, knowing we may have to go deeper next year, not knowing the uncertainty associated? And that's my real concern.
Thank you, Councilor Menthorn. Thank you, Director Fox. Councilor Archer, you had your hand raised. Did you have a question or a comment?
No, it's going to be for the next amendment.
Okay. So we are on the amendment that was made by Councilor. It is in your package, subsection GI made by Councilor Archer, second by Councilor Gunn, amendments to the city operations budget as presented and read by Councilor Archer. Any further amendments or discussions? Amendment only. Councilor Purdy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify. So this amendment is going to include the increase from the sale of 509 Buxton Road, right? And then it's going to be amended later?
No, I did not present the sale of 193, 193,000. I did not present that.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I, I pointed out that it was as read by Councilor Archer because he did omit a couple of sections related to the sale of the Buxton Road parcel and 12 School Street parcel. So.
Right, thank you.
As presented and read by Councilor Archer, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, hope Councilor Copeland?
Just to be 100% on the same page, the remove, the selling of 12 School Street is off the table. Is that correct, Marshall?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And Buxton as well.
Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McFail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
First Amendment passes, 7-0. We have in your packet, we have agenda item G2, adoption of city operations budget as amended. Counselor Menthorn.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to put forward an amendment to the city administrator's budget that eliminates all headcount additions. Decrease account 10230300708, Parks and Recreation Department fees by 44451 and decrease account 1038650360, Information Technology Office 365 by $320 and decrease account 1047050110, Fire, Ambulance, Firefighter, EMT wages by 193784 and decrease account 10401047250324, Fire, Ambulance Uniform Safety Equipment by 23200 and decrease 104250325, Fire, Ambulance Clothing Boot Allowance by 1600 and decrease 1057050103, Parks and Recreation Non-Supervisory Wages by 38147 and decrease account 1057050130, Parks and Recreation Laborer Wages by 38147 and decrease account 1060050215, Fringe Benefits Dental Optical by 1950 and decrease account 1060050287, Fringe Benefit ME Purs by 30,798 and decrease account 1060050288, Fringe Benefits Health and Basic Life Insurance by 49140 and decrease 1060050289, Fringe Benefits FICA by 20,660 and decrease 1060050290, Fringe Benefits Short Term, Long Term Disability by 2952 and decrease 1035030800, Use of Funds Balance by 23200, etc.
I move to approve the order or the amendment. Motion's been made. Counselor Menthorn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Discussion on the amendment only. Counselor Archer, then Counselor Copeland. Counselor Archer?
Yeah, this is more of a technical, can we withdraw the et cetera, that et cetera cannot be in a motion, et cetera is vague. I, I think it was just accidentally in there, but it was said, we can amend, et cetera. I amend this emotion, I'll make it right now. I amend the motion presented by Counselor, Counselor Menthorn, and admit the word, et cetera.
Second.
As I stated earlier today.
Okay.
I also deleted the additional facilities headcount and need information from Glennis on that account to add into the amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. With that, vote on the amendment, the amendment to to remove the et cetera that was read into the record. Roll, any, any discussion on the amendment? The amendment to the amendment. Counselor Archer, you have your hand raised. Is that discussion on this amendment to the amendment? Or is that Counselor Copeland, is this discussion on? And Counselor Menthorn? Is this discussion on? Seeing no hands raised and no counselors seeking recognition on the amendment to the amendment. Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Back to the, back to the amendment? Do we have any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Copeland?
Um, I was going to mention that et cetera, too. That was kind of walking in there. Um, I just wanted to know, you know, up top, it talks about eliminates all headcounts except for the additional, I mean, all right, so he didn't read it, so that's not part of it. Are these decreases going to affect any employees that we currently have, or are these for positions that we're not going to have?
These, as, as explained during the budget process, these are new headcounts that were put forward, and this is eliminating those new headcounts from the city administrator's.
Okay, so in other words, removing the dental optical benefits and some of these other things, it's not for people that are hired now. It's just for those proposed people. Okay?
That's correct.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor and Counselor Menthorn, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Finance Director Salas, please.
Would it be possible to pass this amendment as structured, which excludes the facilities, excludes removing the additional facilities, and then have a separate amendment just to remove that facilities person, which I can prepare as we're working through the vote on this amendment?
Yes, that would be acceptable.
Okay.
Counselor Menthorn, that's your motion. You're okay with that?
I am okay with that, so we will do except for the facilities headcount.
And Counselor Gunn, you were the second on that. Are you okay with that?
Absolutely fine.
Okay, thank you.
So we will pass it with that and then bring it back.
Any more discussion on the adoption of city operations budget as amended, as read into the record and amended by Counselor Menthorn, second by Counselor Gunn? Any further discussion? Seeing no counselors seeking recognition and no hands raised on the amendment only, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Are there any additional amendments to be brought forward to the budget main motion?
Might I suggest there are a couple more, I believe, in the packet while I prepare Counselor Menthorn amendment to remove the facilities headcount?
If we further look.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Johnston?
If now, an appropriate time, I can go back to the prior amendment that I wanted to do, or we can just wait until the end, get through the packet.
I, this is, this is an opportunity to make amendments.
All right. So, oh, let's see. I'd like to recognize a portion of the sale of 90 Temple Street and furthermore allocate 5,000 of the proceeds of the sale to HPC with the balance going to the general fund. Be it ordered, the city council increased account 1027030751, sale of city assets by 78,300 and increase account 1062050483, historic preservation by 5,000. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Finance Director Salas, did you get the, the particulars on that as far as the budget?
Yes, so we added in the proceeds from the sale of 90 Temple Street as well as an increase in HPC appropriation in the amount of 5,000.
Counselor Johnston, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, no counselors seeking recognition, roll call vote on the amendment to increase HPC's budget, $5,000 by a recognized proceeds of the sale of 90 Temple Street. Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn, I don't know if there was, there was a bad feed. Okay, thank you. Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. There are several other motions in the, in the packet. At this point, I think we have one from Counselor Menthorn on page 201 of the pack.
Al, you're muted.
I'd like to put forward an amendment to the city administrator's budget that reduces the funds appropriated for the reevaluation by 50% and that reduces use of the fund balance by the same amount. Be it ordered, the city council decrease account 1041250428, assessor contracted services by 225,000 and decrease account 1035030800, use of fund balance by 225,000.
I move to approve the amendment. Motion's been made by Counselor Menthorn, second by Counselor Archer. Any discussion? Counselor Copeland?
Yes, um, I know that it was like, what, 400 and something thousand for the revaluation?
450.
Right, so why, during these tumultuous times, I'm wondering why we're even spending 225 for revaluation?
We're not spending anything. We are setting it aside for one year.
So we're setting it aside for one year, but on all the capital improvements and everything else that we've done, the way we've done that is reduce their budget. So I don't know why this one is different.
I believe by setting the money aside, it's not, it's taking its availability away from others wanting it. So this way, it's set aside for one year. We could set the whole 450 aside for the year. That doesn't mean we go out and contract the reevaluation. It's just setting the funds aside, so they're not sitting in the revenue fund, making the revenue fund look that much larger. All we're doing is setting it aside so that others may not choose to point out that it's there.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn for that and Counselor Copeland for your question. It is really just an earmark, because in these times, we don't know that we're going to be able to do it, given the COVID-19 pandemic and fallout from. So it's, it's, it's really an earmark and it's, but, you know, it's not something the council has to do or even undertake. So.
Okay. I just wonder why, you know, there were many other things that we could earmark as well. Just wondering, why is this one set aside this way? But I'll just vote no.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Counselor Archer, you had your hand up? No? Counselor Johnston?
I did, but I agree with Counselor Menthorn, what he said.
Okay.
Thank you. So I understand the, the thought process, but to me, it, it just seems easier to just, again, I get the thought process, but mid-year, we could just appropriate these funds. I guess my concern is that if these are earmarked and they become restricted funds, they're also restricted to, for our use. Is that correct? And so that, that's the challenge I have, is we may find ourselves in a position eight months from now where we could utilize these funds, but we've set them aside. And I guess at that point, it would be a budget amendment to, I guess, unrestrict them. If we're not going to do it, to me, it just makes more sense to not do it and revisit this in six months, seven months, eight months, whenever it is we, we have a clearer idea of what we're doing. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. At this time, if there's no objection from a council, Counselor, I'd like to promote Tax Assessor Nick Dischardens, in case there are any questions for him, and, and he can provide his perspective. Andrew, would you promote Assessor Dischardens, please? Good evening and welcome, Tax Assessor Dischardens. How are you this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel, Counsel. First, I'd like to send my appreciation, Counselor Menthorn, for committing to this process. I've reviewed the City of Saco's assessing data. Now, it's almost two years and I, you know, this, this process, of course, this whole process was done prior to this pandemic as far as recommending the revaluation. One thing you have to keep in mind is that unless the market changes, unless we start seeing a significant amount of sales or sales that are, you know, closer to our assessed value in terms of our ratios, we deal a lot with ratios, we're going to be doing a lot of factoring in the future. And what that means is we're going to get, get less and less reimbursements from the state. I understand the, this is very unpredictable. We haven't been through something like this before. So we don't really know at this point right now. I sent some information to the city administrator, really up to date on assessed to sale comparison numbers. And there's, we're not really seeing any ratios increase. We're still seeing roughly, on average, around 80%. I did mention to the city administrator in some information that there is a, a little bit less in terms of the volume of sales. We've seen about 40 to 50 a month of sales. In the last month or so, we've seen that kind of cut to about 25 to 30-ish. So the number of sales has decreased a little bit, but in terms of the assessed to sale comparisons, they have not changed. We're still seeing, you know, not a lot of inventory out there, so, you know, there's still, you know, a lot of individuals who are buying at a premium price. So you know, by, by really investing in this process for the future, it's going to help us as a department really prepare for it so that we're ready. So I guess what we're, what's the unpredictability is really, you know, is the market going to change? Are we going to see, you know, these, are we going to see these sales prices kind of really decrease and the market go through a recession? It's hard to say, so I guess, you know, you know, to, to end on this would be if we don't, you know, really prepare for this process and the market doesn't change, then, and we don't do some sort of an update, then we're going to be getting less reimbursements from the state in terms of Betty and, Betty and Holmes are the two big reimbursements, so. are the two big reimbursements. So just keep that in the back of your mind. Keep in the back of your mind that unless the market significantly changes, and we don't really do any updates in the future, whether it's a revaluation or some sort of market adjustments, we will be getting less revenues from the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick, for that explanation. We have a couple of council questions here from Counsel Menthorn and Counselor Copeland. Counselor Menthorn?
So, Nick, based on everything you just said, by setting aside half the money now, if six months from now, nine months from now, we're into the next fiscal year, we don't see a recession, it doesn't look as doom and gloom as it is, we can go ahead, move forward with the revale. If it looks like we are trending down that recession, depression slope, and property values are dropping, then we could ride it out for maybe 12 to 15 months, and then kick the revale button then to catch it at the low point and revale at the low point?
Yeah, that's an option, Counsel Menthorn. That's, you know, we can, what I had mentioned to the City Administrator is that I was going to send updates on a monthly basis on how our sales are doing and how our ratios are doing. You know, so, and I'd mentioned, you know, I think we'll have a better idea in the fall. You know, it really depends on how our summer goes, you know, with, I think that's, you know, with the tourist industry and so forth. And, you know, but that's an option. An option is, you know, as we're monitoring these sales, assessed values and our ratios on a month-to-month basis, and we do earmark this, you know, this money and keep it on the side, you know, and we do go through some sort of recession, or we don't see any changes, we can always put it off and just plan on it in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. And just for clarification, if this was to go through, there would be an RFP process, Request for Proposal process, to any company that we would go through. And if that was likely, the idea is those additional monies could be used to start that process. And so that is kind of why there's some earmarking money for that. With that, Counselor Copeland?
Well, first, I want to say thank you to Counselor Menthorn. That was a great idea to do a revale when everything's low, so that we don't lose our state money. But, Nick, do you need all 225,000 to start the program, to start the RFQ process or whatever? So, I mean, so I guess we chose half of it, but is that really what you need, if you need to start the process?
No, the quote that I got was, we wanted to get what it would be for a revale company to do a full revale. We didn't, we haven't really gone into the specific details of exactly what they're going to do. I think it's more of just, if we know there's a commitment, if we know the council is committed to making the process happen, more so than we can begin our process to looking at, you know, the preliminary process to it, so that ultimately, when we do the process, whether it's in, you know, 12 or 18 months, as we kind of look and see how the market is doing, we've kind of already started that preliminary process. So if we want to earmark more money on, you know, in the future, next year or the year after, as we're monitoring the market, then we've already started a process. So by the time we get the revale company to commit, we, you know, we're going to make this process more efficient. So we don't necessarily need that exact, I want to think more of a commitment, understanding that, you know, when we have a revale company come in, you know, these numbers are, you know, probably not that far from a revale company doing the full revale in Saco, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Menthorn has his hand raised. Counselor Menthorn?
Again, I just want to point out that if we set this money aside, earmark it for a year, at the end of the year, if we don't use it, it's just going to come right back into the general revenue fund. So it's not like it's being spent, it's just set aside. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, Tax Assessor Dischardens, thank you for joining us this evening. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, a roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes six one. Moving on to the next amendment is also from Counselor Menthorn. We have on page 202 of the budget, or excuse me, of the packet tonight, we have an amendment from Counselor Menthorn. Counselor Menthorn?
Mr. Mayor, I also have the amendment in front of me to remove the additional facilities headcount that we left in, in the page 200 amendment.
Okay.
So be it ordered, the city council increase account 10-482-50351, public works, building, repairs and maintenance by 10,000, and decrease account 10-494-50103, public works, non-supervisory wages by 45-890, and decrease account 10-600-50215, fringe benefits dental optical by 325, and decrease account 10-600-50287, fringe benefit main purse by 3947, and decrease account 10-600-50288, fringe benefits health and life by 8190, and decrease account 10-600-50289, FICA taxes by 3511, and decrease account 10-600-50290, fringe benefits, short and long-term disability by 492. I move to approve the amendment.
Counselor Menthorn has made the motion, the amendment, and Counselor Purdy has seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Menthorn?
Yes. This is the Band-Aid, if you will, to the prior page 200 amendment that would reduce, remove that final additional facilities headcount. Thank you.
And just so, just for clarity, that's removing the proposed headcount increase, not removing an actual current position. Just want clarification. With that, any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for a roll call vote. Counsel Archer? On the amendment only. Counsel Archer? Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Counselor Menthorn, we have an amendment from you on page 202 of the budget book.
Yes, Mayor.
Not the budget book, the pack, the agenda pack.
Thank you. I'd like to put forward amendment to the City Administrator's budget to fund the following small increases to departmental budgets as one-time use of fund balance. The chart 10-352-5032, training, 1,300. 10-412-5032, training, 750. 10-412-50336, telephone, 1,200. 10-412-50339, travel, 750. 10-412-50360, computer software, 520. 10-442-5032, training, 400. 10-442-50330, dues and memberships, 250. 10-442-50336, telephone, 800. 10-442-50350, furnitures and fixtures, 500. 10-462-50301, office supplies, 500. 10-462-50308, cleaning supplies, 500. 10-462-50320, city vehicle repairs, 2,500. 10-462-50322, training, 4,000. 10-462-50324, uniform safety equipment, 2,000. 10-462-50330, dues and membership, 800. 10-462-50339, travel, 5,000. 10-462-50411, electronic equipment repair, 340. Be it ordered, city council increase account 10-350-3800, use of fund balanced by 22110. I move to approve the amendment.
Motion's been made by Counselor Menthorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion and no counselors seeking recognition, move for a roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Johnston?
Is it possible to get an update as far as the red calculator, or the budget calculator?
Sure. At this time, Brian, do you or Glennis want to be on the screen here and have the mil rate calculator going?
I'm going to toss it to Glennis. And Glennis, I'm not sure if we have another staff member assisting with this or not.
So I can go ahead and share where we are with the mil rate calculator.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas, for joining us again and sharing your screen and updating it as we go along.
Absolutely. So can you see the Excel spreadsheet?
We can see the spreadsheet.
So you can see, I've been tracking the amendments as they've been approved by council. And where we are right now with all the amendments that have been approved is $8.11, which is an eight cent increase on the municipal mil rate versus fiscal year 2020 approved. And again, these are all estimates. The mil rate is the domain of the city assessor, but based on the latest numbers I have, this is where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas. Counselor Johnston, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next motion in the packet here is, again, from Counselor Menthorn on page 203.
Thank you, Mayor. I am torn on this one. If we are going to start any of the process of the refurbishment of the school street property, I would like to withdraw this amendment and provide the, in the budget, the corresponding heating, fuel, electricity, water, phone expenses, so that the building is not cold during that refurbishment process.
Counselor Menthorn, it's my understanding you want to withdraw this motion.
That is correct.
Okay. Moving on to the next amendment proposed in the budget in the packet tonight here on page 204, is from Counsel Archer.
Yes, you have a motion, but I have an amendment to, before I present this one, it's only because it's in succession. We should probably approve my initial motion before we approve this. So I would like to forward an amendment to the City Administrator's budget that offsets lost revenue from keeping the 12 school street property for a future teen and senior center, along with cuts totaling $1,6,650. Be it ordered that city council decrease 10-570-50113, parks and rec seasonal wages by $40,000. Decrease 10-570-50114, parks and rec overtime by $3,000. Decreased account 10-572-50307, park and rec program supplies by $1,000. Decreased account 10-572-50323, P&amp;R, Parks and Rec athletic equipment by $5,000. Decrease 10-572-50329, B250, park and recs program t-shirts by $4,500. Decrease amount 10-572-50329, 440251, Parks and Recs cheering uniforms by 4,500. Decrease account 10-572-50329, 4253, Parks and Recs logo apparel by $1,000. Decrease account 10-572-50344, Parks and Recs printing by $400. Decrease account 10-572-50421, Parks and Recs general special programs by $1,250. Decrease account 10-572-50421, 42,000. P&amp;R, Parks and Recs MRPA discount ticket sales by $8,000. Decrease account 10-572-50421, 42001, teen cooking classes by $1,000. Decrease account 10-572-50421, 40,000. Softball officials by $500. Decrease account 10-572-50421, 4503, vacation camps by 25,000. Decrease account 10-572-50421, 41,001, Purple Camp by $9,500. Decrease account 10-572-50421, 41002, Memorial Camp by $11,000. Decrease account 10-572-50421, 41004, Teen Epic Camp by $10,000. Decrease account 10-572-50421, 41005, Kinder Camp by $3,000. Decrease account 10-572-50426, Volunteer Program by $500. And I will discuss after.
Thank you, Counsel Archer, for your amendment. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Counselor Johnston? Now the amendment is before us for discussion. Counsel Archer, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, for clarification, these cuts are based on COVID-19. These are expenses that we would not have and will not have due to COVID. These are expenses that we would not have and will not have due to COVID-19 and operations and programs not being operated at the time. These cuts are specifically to save the teen center and the senior center. These cuts are to help offset some of the losses from the potential sale of this building, which was initially proposed. This was the work that was conducted to be found of cuts that we will not have. Some of them will not be realized because of, the program revenues won't be coming in, things like that. So we don't need to spend $5,000 on t-shirts when we won't have kids in the program. So a lot of these cuts are to, to address and save this teen center.
Thank you, Councilor Archer, for that. If there's no objection at this point, I'd like to bring forth and Director Ryan Summer to promote to a panelist in case there's any questions for Director Summer. Good evening and welcome, Director Summer.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Yourself?
Not too bad tonight.
Good. We have a couple of questions regarding a budget amendment from Councilor Archer regarding COVID-19 cuts. Cuts the, into programming that would not be utilized due to the programming not happening. So the first question is from Councilor Minthorne.
Yeah, Ryan, I mean, there's a, a whole, yeah. This is like one-tenth of your budget getting hit here by the looks of it. And I, I know we're, we're hitting a tenth of it. How much revenue would be generated by this so that really this is, even though we're decreasing it, we don't have the revenue to go with it? So is it a wash? Is it going to have an impact? And if so, what are those impacts going to be that maybe we don't move all of these because of the impact they're going to have on some of the kids?
So for, for some of it, when you look at the programming, obviously our summer camp that we're offering is a much smaller summer camp that we had compared to last year. And so the $40,000 reduction in seasonal employees because we're not hiring the same amount of people to work the camps. The, the 40,000 that we're cutting also from the field trips is because we're not taking field trips because of the COVID-19. You know, everything's going to be pretty much on site. When you look at revenue, our revenue from summer camp will be down, but most of the revenue that we see for summer camp for fiscal year actually comes in this fiscal year and not for next fiscal year. So the hope is that next fiscal year or fiscal year 21, summer camp will be back to normal. So we were able to see that revenue on the next fiscal year cycle. This is the stuff that we, that I sat down and looked carefully through. The hope is that we'll provide programs throughout the summer, throughout the school year as well, that the revenue will be back to where I truly believe it will be, which is be about a million dollars. Expecting that after the bell program is going to happen. Basketball, soccer, as we kind of figure our way through this COVID-19 pandemic. But a lot of this is kind of become, coming off the top of my summer camp more than the future programs of the fall, winter and spring and summer of next year. So my hope is that the revenue is going to hit the target of $1 million. So this has an impact on, on my department. But it's something that again, I think at least myself and a couple of the council members believe that 12 school street is an asset to us. It's something that we're willing to sacrifice to try to keep 12 school street around for, for at least another year to see if we can, to make it work and to have a facility that we can expand into when the time comes. So it will have an impact, but it won't have a detrimental impact to the organization.
Thank you, Director Summer. Councilor Minthorne, does that answer your questions?
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you.
Any further questions for Director Summer? Seeing no further questions for Director Summer, any further discussion on this? Right, Director Summer, thank you for joining us. With that, we'll go to a roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
And Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorne?
Yes.
And Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0. Councilor Archer, do you now want to present the motion in the budget? In the budget packet here tonight?
Yeah, it's appropriate with the pass motion passing.
Page 204?
Yes, thank you, Mr., Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put a, forward, forward an amendment to the city administrative budget to reduce one-time use of fund balance for renovations on 12 school street to only the minimum cost required to keep the building functional. Be it ordered that the city council decrease account 10, 681, 509, 52. Capital projects 12 school street teen center by $145,000. And decrease account 10, 350, 300, 800. Use of fund balance by $145,000.
Second.
Been a motion made by Councilor Archer, second by Councilor Johnston. See a couple of hands raised already, Councilor Archer and then Councilor Copeland. Councilor Archer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so just wanted to give a little background on this again. There are maintenance repairs to this building that we've known for, for a while. It's important that we at least maintain it in a position that it looks like today. We don't, even though we won't be using the building this, possibly this year, we still want to maintain it at a level that is satisfactory for when we do start bringing the teens into that center and seniors. In this case, I do recognize the use of the fund balance as appropriate for counselors who are new. Past council increased our use of fund balance to be from, I believe it was just that one month to about a, it's around a month to two months worth of cash on hand that we're allowed to have. And one of the reasons for that expansion of the percentage was to, to protect ourselves in situations like COVID-19. Even though the last council was not aware that we'd be using it this quick, we did put ourselves in a position where we wouldn't have to go after the tax base for certain aspects. So again, our last council actually protected us through some of this COVID-19 on the budget. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Councilor Archer. Councilor Johnston?
So this, this amendment includes enough funds to, you know, as, as Councilor Archer just stated, I guess, make repairs to, to a point. The, the prior amendment that Councilor Minthorne withdrew, that's still, we're still going to fund it at a level. I guess my, my question is, should we withdraw that motion that he previously withdrew? I mean, if we're not going to keep the building operating aside from, you know, basic heating level, do we really need all these other funds? In that, in those lines, I guess is my question. And I guess it'd be directed at the Director Summers.
Can we promote Director Summer again? Director Summer, thank you for joining us again. Councilor Johnston had a question. I don't know if you heard it. Were you able to hear the question prior to being promoted?
I was, sir, yes. So to, to answer Council Johnson's question, there were some that I would recommend leaving on, at least to get us through the year, which would also be the heat, the electric, the water. The, I would keep the maintenance, the building maintenance on it. You wouldn't need to keep the computer software of 4,000. You wouldn't need to keep the telephone of 2,400. The cleaning supplies or the 7,500 for the, for the, that's the increase of fees. So there's some that I would leave on just because especially if we do some work in there and to begin to rehab it. You know, the telephone, the, a couple others are more for us to begin to program it out. I think if we begin to do that at some nature before the end of this fiscal year, I would strongly recommend that I come back to you more on a budget amendment process and not so much as a keeping it in the budget thing. We definitely want to keep the 15,000 in the heat, the water, the electricity. Those are the things that's going to keep this building to not get mildew and not have the, the, the mold kind of grow in there and so forth, kind of circulate the air through and also keep the building heated during the winter time.
Okay, excellent. That answers my question.
Thank you, Director Summer. Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Any further questions for Director Summer or comments? Seeing no comments and questions and no counselors seeking recognition. Thank you again, Director Summer, for joining us. And with that, I'll call for Council Archer.
Should we just then add those specific items that were addressed to be removed? Remove them under an amendment to my current motion?
We can, we, we can do it that way? If that's the way, if you'd like to make an amendment to the amendment?
I think it just cleans it up.
Sure.
Can we re-identify what we are keeping? So.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry. Councilor Minthorne, go ahead.
So I'll put forward an amendment to the city administrator's budget.
Councilor Minthorne, hold on because we, we have an amendment on the floor.
I will, I will withdraw to allow Councilor Minthorne to make the amendment to the original motion.
Well, okay.
What I was going to do is I was going to amend your motion with those four items that Director Summer could, said we could remove. So we could remove those four, tagging it onto your amendment and go that route. Is that okay with everyone? Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
So there, the, the current amendment on the floor as read in the packet is on page 204, has been motioned by Council Archer, second by Councilor Johnston. And then there was going to be a further amendment by Councilor Archer who withdrew. Now Councilor Minthorne has made an amendment or wishes to make an amendment to that to introduce the discussion points for the 12 school street property identified by Director Summer. Council Archer, are you okay with that friendly amendment there?
Of course. It just cleans up this, the, the end of the.
And Councilor Johnston, as the second, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the amendment here. Councilor Minthorne, do you want to state the actual language for the amendment?
Yes, from page 203, which was previously withdrawn, decrease account 1,0230, 307, 08. Parks and Rec department fees by 7,500. And decrease account 1,0572, 503, 08. Parks and Rec cleaning supplies by 1,500. Skipping down and decrease account 1,0572, 503, 60. Parks and Rec computer software by 4,000. Decrease 1,0572, 504, 21. Parks and Recreational Special Programs by 1,500.
That is the amendment being made by Councilor Minthorne. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion? To the amendment on the amendment? Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
And Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
And Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorne?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
That motion passes, the amendment to the amendment passes 7-0. Back to the main amendment. Main amendment is, any discussion on the main amendment? Seeing no discussion and no counselors seeking recognition on the main amendment. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
And Councilor Purdy? Councilor Purdy on the main amendment?
Yes.
And Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
And Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorne?
Yes.
And Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The main, the main amendment passes 7-0. At this point, I'm going to call a recess for five, let's say 10 minutes. It is 8:37. Like to reconvene at 8:47. At that point, I'd like to bring forward the Finance Director for an update as we've made a couple of corrections here and we've made a couple of amendments to make sure that we're on track and see where we are. I'd like to bring the Finance Director forward for a presentation. So with that, I would like to call a recess at 8:37 and please come back at 8:47. Thank you.
Andrew, can we come back to the meeting now?
Thank you. Thank you everyone for allowing us to short recess. We are reconvened at eight forty eight. And at this moment, I would like to ask Finance Director Salas to come forward and give us an update and share her screen and see where we are and answer any questions about what has been done and transpired to this point. Finance Director Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do want to thank Emily Roy and Denise Plavette who are taking notes and keeping me honest on tracking what actions have been taken by council so far. Can everyone see my screen?
We can see your screen.
Thank you. So for a quick, uh, review, um, I did start out placing that higher TIF cost. Again, uh, TIF appropriations are not the domain of the city council. However, they are factored into the calculation of the city mill rate. So to avoid any surprises, I had the latest forecasted increase on TIF transfer amounts from our city assessor. Uh, next we have the amendment to offset revenue losses put forward by Counselor Archer. I noticed that, uh, any sale of city assets have been removed in that amount. And next we have the remove of headcount additions except for facilities. Uh, recognition of revenue from the sale of 90 Temple Street. And as I'm doing this, I'm recognizing that that should be in the ongoing column. So I'm going to remove that. Uh, sale of 90 Temple Street HPC appropriation, um, that's an expense amount. Uh, and then we have a reduced revow by 225,000. We have, um, the facilities headcount removal that did increase in a slight, result in a slight increase in contracted services. Um, and then of course the decrease of salary and benefits. The movement of small budget increases from ongoing to one time. Further cuts to, uh, Parks and Rec operations, reducing teen center rehab to a minimum and then the targeted teen center, uh, reductions. Currently, uh, the municipal mill rate is forecasting out to eight dollars and 20 cents. A little bit higher than I had, um, dated a couple of minutes ago. However, I did identify when reconciling my mill rate calculator, uh, with my, uh, partners that I had double counted one of the, uh, amendments. So as of right now, we're looking at eight dollars and 20 cents, uh, on the city mill rate.
Which is a 17 cent increase from years prior.
Uh, yes, that's correct. That's what I'm seeing.
Any questions for Finance Director Salas? Okay, seeing no questions and no comments, we can move on to the next, the next couple motions. On page 205, Counselor Menthorn, you have a, an amendment?
Yes, I'd like to put forward an amendment to the city administrator's budget that removes the $60,000 in increased funding for Saco Main Street in the general fund budget. 29,000 of the 60,000 request has been approved by EDC to be funded by TIPS for a total of $100,000 funded to Saco Main Street by TIPS for fiscal year 2021. Be it ordered, the city council decrease account 1062050707, Saco Main Street by 60,000. I move to approve the amendment.
Motion made by Counselor Menthorn, second by Counselor McPhail. Discussion? Seeing no hands raised and no counselors seeking recognition. Roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Our motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to, on page 206, we have another amendment from Counselor Menthorn.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to put forward an amendment to the city administrator's budget that funds the following small increases to supported entities budgets through the use of the fund balance. 1062050483 historic preservation, 835. 1062050700 supported entities, 4,500. 1062050704 Saco Pathfinders, 2,000. 1062050716 Southern Main Area Agency on Aging, 2,000. 1062050718 Seeds of Hope, 3,000. 1062050721 American Red Cross of Maine, 500. Be it ordered, the city council increase account 1035030800 use of fund balance by 12,835. I move to approve the amendment.
Motion's been made by Counselor Menthorn. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Purdy. Um, under discussion, we have Counselor Copeland first. Counselor Copeland.
Quick question. Um, in the account description, it says supported entities, but all the other entities are supported entities. So I don't understand that.
They're new entities.
What's that?
They're new entities. They don't have an account yet.
Yes, to Counselor Johnston's point, I try not to build out, um, specific accounts for new entities that are requesting funding, simply to avoid creating new accounts that may not actually ever have any money of them in them. It just affects our general ledger from getting loaded.
All right, well, maybe you say first time or whatever, but I'm most.
Okay, so Counselor Menthorn has motioned, Counselor Purdy has seconded. Counselor Johnston, you have your hand up.
I do. Um, I would like to put forward an amendment, Counselor Menthorn's amendment regarding supported entities, which removes funding for Light Flight Foundation, New Beginnings, and York County Shelter Programs, but also like to reduce the appropriation for the newly formed Saco Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee to $700. Be it ordered, the city council decrease account 1062050700 supported entities by $3,800 and decrease account 1035030800 use of fund balance by 3,800. Moves to approve the amendment.
Counselor Johnston has made an amendment and Counselor Archer has seconded. Now on the amendment to the amendment, discussion on the amendment to the amendment only. Counselor Johnston?
So, um, my thinking here was that these organizations haven't ever been before, city council, um, in, in the past, when it's a new organization such as Seeds of Hope, they had come forth and asked. And then with the cycle, the Saco Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, their original request was a thousand, uh, 300 of that was to go towards Build Maine, which is going to be online this year. And with the city of Saco being a sponsor, I believe they would be able to attend for free like the rest of us. So that was my thinking.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Copeland?
Um, in that same vein, I'm, I'm wondering, uh, where did these come from? Did, uh, a counselor sponsor them or where did they just come from?
Counselor Copeland, as it was discussed at our last meeting when this question was posed, these are just letters that were received from this, to the city staff and put into the book as supported entities. No counselor brought them forward.
Okay.
And just.
Thank you.
And Counsel Archer?
Yeah, that's how I understood it. I'm not in interest of any, just at this, in this year's budget cycle due to what's going on, um, those entities that we haven't supported in the past, new, new specific ones, um, should probably not be given to this year. Uh, I know what Light Flight does, it costs about $50,000 to insurance if you need their services. They're not headquartered here in Saco, they are a good service, but this probably isn't the best year to give to them, um, just because we're trying to find all these reduced cuts right now. So, um, that's why I agree with, uh, Counselor Johnston. Um, I was going to make an amendment for the Saco Bikes, but I, I, I feel that, uh, Counselor Johnston has explained why there was a reduction of 700. I was initially against that. But again, if they're not going to be spending that 300 on a, on that fun cause fundraiser due to COVID, it's probably accurate.
Thank you, Counsel Archer. Counselor Copeland, your hand is up. Do you have a further comment? Okay. So the amendment to the amendment was motioned by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Archer. Any further discussion? Finance Director Salas, did you get those account numbers and, and details of the amendment?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
With that, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yep.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment to the amendment passed seven zero. We are back to the main amendment. Any discussion on the main amendment? Seeing no discussion on the main amendment, no counselor seeking recognition. Move forward with a roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
And Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council Archer. Counselor Copeland, your hand is up. Do you have a further comment? Okay. So the amendment to the amendment was motioned by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Archer. Any further discussion? Finance Director Salas, did you get those account numbers and, and details of the amendment?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
With that, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yep.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment to the amendment passed seven zero. We are back to the main amendment. Any discussion on the main amendment? Seeing no discussion on the main amendment, no counselor seeking recognition, move forward with a roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
And Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
And Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Our motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to page 207 of the agenda packet, we have a motion or an amendment to the city administrator's budget by Counselor Purdy. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put forward an amendment to the city administrator's budget to reduce the proposed joint Bitterford-Saco fund from $50,000 to $25,000. Be it ordered, the city council increase account 10460-50400 Joint Projects with Bitterford by $25,000.
Second.
Amendment's been made by Counselor Purdy, second by Counselor Menthorn. Discussion? Counselor Copeland?
I move that we decrease that amount to zero. I think these are tough times and I don't think that prospective things that we should be putting that money aside.
Second.
The amendment to the amendment has been made by Counselor Copeland and second by Counselor Johnston to reduce the amount to zero. Any discussion? Counselor Copeland, your hand is up?
It's up from before.
Okay. Counselor Menthorn?
Yes, could we have our council liaisons to the joint council committees of Saco and Bitterford? Please share the input of what this impact would be on the overall budget. Thank you.
Counselor Archer, Counselor Purdy, whichever one of you would like to
Yes, I can take this, Mr. Mayor. And the mayor is also part of the committee as well, so he can speak. Is that, there was an agreement that the two, the two cities would find a, a common, common denominator, which would be whatever that was, was what the other city would allocate. This is to help with a, several type ventures. So from a financial point of view, it's to help with the harbor master and animal control officer. So from a financial aspect, it's only, it's $25,000. However, this two cities have been trying to, there's going to be a political cost if we don't, if we don't do this. Is that we have been trying to work with them over the last several years in ways to find, ways to save money. COVID kind of has thrown a wrench into this, but I don't believe it would be in our best interest politically to, to go to zero in this case, because we are trying to find ways to work with each other to create, to, to provide services to, to two cities across the river. We know that it works well with assessing and we really want to see what else we can share expenses for. The original proposal was 50 and I believe Jim could speak on himself, but I did agree to Jim dropping that to 25,000 just because of COVID, but to go to zero could, could do some harm.
Thank you.
Counselor Purdy, do you want to follow up?
No, Counsel, Counsel Archer summed it up pretty well. We're, I said, we're, we're looking for, looking for areas that we can work together and save both communities on, on, on shared expenses.
Thank you. Counselor Copeland, then Counselor Johnston?
Just wondering, what would the $25,000 do? Why can't we just work with them? Come up with some savings? Why does it have to involve 50 or $25,000?
Counselor Copeland, again, this is, this is for earmarking purposes so that they, you know, as the, as the group has discussed, is in the past, there was lack of there was a lack of trust on either side at some points. And this would, was one way to show that we are really working together, that that trust is being built, is that both communities put some skin in the game, so to speak, to actually move forward with some ideas or some joint ventures. And not to say that that money will be spent, but earmarked for purposes if, if a study has to be done or what have you, that they, the group can then go ahead and say to the councils, hey, we should really do this. And then if the council approves it, there's money already earmarked for those purposes. And that's really the culmination of how this came about and what we're trying to do in, in our partnership with our neighboring community.
I understand that, but we're, we're talking about taxpayer funds here in a very difficult time. And I just think, you know, that we can tell them we have skin in the game and have us come up with a council resolution or something to prove that. I don't think it needs to involve $25,000. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I, I would agree with, with Counselor Copeland. I don't think, setting aside $25,000 shows that we're willing to come to the table. I think from going back 20, maybe even 30 years, the City of Saco has, has shown that we've always been willing to do that. Not having the specifics of what this, these funds would be spent on is concerning to me. You know, I'd prefer that, again, I publicly will state that, you know, I'm supportive of it. And we can do that through the form of a resolution, but earmarking money, I'm opposed to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further discussion? Counsel Archer?
In, in part of this is also that the way it was originally designed is that if Bitterford chooses less, then we automatically have the less. We literally go for the lowest common denominator. So I, again, we're in for 25,000 as a way to, to reach across the river, identify some things and move forward, because that relationship has been tumultuous since, for many years in some cases. This was kind of like offering. Sorry. Oh, um, and again, so again, if, if Bitterford chooses not to put forward, ours is automatically zeroed out as far whatever their number is. It goes down to the lowest common denominator.
Thank you, Counsel Archer. Any further discussion?
So we don't know, since they haven't passed their budget yet. Thank you. I thought I did it and you were okay. I apologize, Mr. Mayor. We haven't heard that their budget has passed and that this is on their budget as well. I'm, they're dealing with COVID as well. And I know that they have tough decisions to make. So and, and I'm just curious, if we put $25,000 out there and doesn't the decision have to come back to the whole council and can't we make adjustments to the budget at that point? I mean, why do we have to have $25,000 just hanging out there? Thank you.
As I stated, Counselor Copeland, it's simple earmark money and anything would have to come back to the council. The, or the, the committee doesn't have the approval to expend it, expend funds. So anything would have to come back to the council. And yes, you, you, you can just simply keep it in the undesignated fund balance in rather than put it into earmark for this programming. But there is a political cost that comes with that, or I say there could be a political cost in working together with our neighboring communities, because that, you know, despite what some people think, that relationship has had some sufferings along the way due to several tried attempts at a couple of different projects that have failed. And so we are trying to move that forward. And so this is a step in the right direction, so to speak. But it's up to the council whether to put money aside for that or not. And that's, that's the, that's the explanation to answer your question. And Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. You know, you, you just stated that this would have to come back to council. Where is that stated anywhere? This is, we're earmarking funds today, setting them aside. Now they're restricted funds for a use that apparently is at the, you know, the mercy of this committee. Without that in writing somewhere, I don't see how you can say that it would have to come back to council. I mean, you have contingency that could be used at some point. If there was something before the councils for the use of these funds, you could just leave it in, in the fund balance. And when something's proposed, I mean, I would prefer to see a resolution moving forward from both communities. I mean, if you, if you want to have skin in the game, that's how you do it, in my mind. And then when, you know, costs come up, we can deal with it through a budget request.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a vote on the amendment to the amendment. So that is the amendment by counsel, the amendment to the amendment by Counselor Copeland, second by Counselor Johnston to reduce this to zero. Counsel Archer?
No.
Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion fails two five. We now back to the main motion, or the main amendment, rather. Back to the main motion. Any discussion on the main amendment? Seeing no discussion and no counselor seeking recognition on the main amendment. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
And Counselor Copeland?
Yes, because it's better than 50.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes six one. Moving on to I believe that is the, that is the last of the amendments that were in the, the that were in the agenda. Are there any amendments outside of the agenda? I see Counselor Johnston has his hand raised. Counselor Johnston?
Yes, I, I had requested a, a amendment be put forth from staff, but they didn't have time today to exactly, you know, figure out all the accounts that would be needed. So I don't know how you want to handle that. Do we either recess this meeting, give them time, or we come back at a later date? Which is what was suggested by staff.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to check in with Glennis just to see what her thoughts are on this point. I believe she's familiar with this particular amendment being brought forward by Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, City Administrator Kena.
Yes, thank you. Um, I am familiar with the amendment. Planning Economic Development Director Clovett and I have had brief discussions. I think I could probably put something together 20 minutes. If you'd like me to structure the line item amendment right now, just, and it might be faster than that, but I don't want to promise that it'll be less than 20 minutes, because I got to work through all the line items and make sure it's teed up.
Mr. Mayor, can we take up other business on our agenda while that's being prepared?
Is there any objection to moving on to other business while city staff prepares an additional amendment to the city administrator's budget? If you have an objection, please note the objection and we'll move, move forward. See, Counselor Johnston, you have your hand raised as that from before? Counselor Menthorn, then Counsel Archer, Counselor Menthorn?
Yes, I'm gonna need Glennis to prepare page 210 with the new adjusted numbers as part of her preparation for 20 minutes from now.
Thank you. And Counsel Archer? Okay.
Is it likely this further reduction, making use of TIP funds will pass? I'm trying to judge whether I should prepare the motion on 210 inclusive of that last amendment.
I, I would prepare it both ways, Finance Director Salas, because there's no way to, without officially taking a vote, there's no way to tell which way the vote is going to go.
In that case, I would prefer, it takes a lot of time. So, I mean, it's going to take a lot of time to post it and tee it up. So it's probably, in the interest of time, I would recommend that I tee up this final amendment by Counselor Johnston. And then based on how that passes, I can tee up this final motion.
Fair enough.
All right, I'll start work on it now.
Okay, thank you. Councilors, if there's no objections, which I haven't seen any, we're going to move on to item H, adoption of the FY 2125 capital program, and that is Counselor Gunn on page 212.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Capital Plan Committee met several times from January through March to develop and recommend a capital program that would be included as part of the city administrator's budget. On March 30th, 2020, the city administrator, administrator presented the fiscal year 2021 budget, which included a, as section three of the overall budget, the five-year capital program. Be it ordered, the city council approve the fiscal year 2021 fiscal year 2025 capital program.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn, second by Counselor Menthorn. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion and no counselors seeking recognition, roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item I, council resolution approving school budget for fiscal year 2021. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, do we move forward with this since we sent the school budget back last week? Technically, we don't have a school budget to work with.
If you, if you read the motion so we can bring it to the table for discussion, I think you'll, you'll find there's a, there's a there's a plan to move forward with that.
Very good. Hang on, this is a long one. The school board approved a budget for the fiscal year 2020 as forwarded said budget to the city council for due approval. Be resolved pursuant to Title 20A, Section 2307, 1485, and 15690 that the following school budget cost centers be adapted, adopted for approval and expenditure for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Regular instruction, 24,188,281. Special education, 9,824,162. Other instruction, 169,571. Student and staff support, 2,412,402. System administration, 855,061. School administration, 1,373,536. Transportation and buses, Facilities maintenance, 2,336,536. Facilities maintenance, 2,336,536. Debt service and other commitments, 309,013. The sum of 43,381,286 be appropriated for the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, and the sum of 18,497,843 be raised as the city's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essentials Program and Service Funding Act in accordance with the main revised statutes, Title 20A, Section 15688. State mandated explanation, the city's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, is the amount of money determined by state law to be the minimum amount the city must raise in order to receive the full amount of state dollars. The sum of 309,013 be raised and appropriated for the annual payments on debt service previously approved by the city's voters for non-state funded school construction projects and not state, not, non-state funded portions of school construction projects. In addition to the funds appropriated as the local share of the city's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12. State mandated, mandated explanation, non-state funded debt service is the amount of money needed for the annual payments on the city's long-term debt for major capital school construction projects that are not approved for the states, for state subsidies. The bonding of this long-term debt was previously approved by the city voters or other legislative body. The school board be authorized to expend 43,381,286 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021. From the city's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for local purposes under the main revised statutes, Title 20-A, Section 15690. Unexpendated balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools, and the school board be authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from federal and state grants and/or programs and/or other sources during the fiscal year for school purposes, provided that such grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditures of other funds not previously appropriated. I move to approve the revolution, the resolution.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Counselor Menthorn?
Yes, I move that we table this item to the next meeting of the city council on June 1st, providing the school board passes the budget back to us. Otherwise, we pass it out to June 8th.
Motion's been made to table. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Menthorn, seconded by, by, motion to table's been made by Counselor Menthorn, second by Counselor Copeland. No discussion on the motion to table. Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
And Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Would have appreciated an opportunity to comment on this before, but yes.
Motion passes seven zero to table this until June 1st. Moving on to, J, council resolution approving additional local funds for the school budget fiscal year 2020, 2020 to 2021. Counselor Purdy?
The school board approved a budget for fiscal year 20 to 21 and has forwarded said budget to the city council for review and approval. Be it resolved that 140,055 be appropriated for, whoops, wait a minute, mine the wrong one. Sorry, I was on the wrong item. Start over again. The school budget, the school board approved a budget for the fiscal year 2021 and has forwarded said budget to the city council for review and approval. Be it resolved that 9,980,579 be raised and appropriated in additional local funds, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by 9,980,579 is required to fund the budget recommended by the school board. State mandated explanation, the additional local funds are those locally raised funds over and above the city's local contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act and local amounts raised for the annual payment on non-state funded debt service that will help achieve the school department budget for educational programs. School board statement of reasons for exceeding essential programs and services allocation model, the school budget proposed for the fiscal year exceeds the state's funding allocation model for various reasons. In general, the model does not recognize the actual costs to operate and maintain the school program and curriculum. Two, the state is not funding the model at 55% of the actual cost, actual total cost of education. Three, the state has added certain costs to the model without increasing available funding, such as state's share of teacher retirement costs. Four, the state has reduced or eliminated funding of costs necessary to operate the schools by such means as changing the student-teacher ratio, the student ed tech and other student-staff ratios, and reducing funding of administrative costs. Note, Title 20-A, Section 15671-A, 5B requires a separate recorded vote for these additional local funds and approval by a majority of the full council. Section 15690 provides for the school board's statement of reasons to accompany the article as approved to the council. I move to approve, approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy, second by Counselor Menthorn. Any discussion? Is there a corresponding motion to table? Counselor Menthorn?
Yes, there is. I would like to table this to June 1st.
Motion to table's been made by Counselor Menthorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Just, no discussion, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
And Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
And Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item K, council resolution approving adult education budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Counselor Purdy?
The school board approved a budget for fiscal year 2021 and has forwarded said budget to the council for review and approval. Be it resolved that 140,055 be appropriated for adult education and that 140,055 be raised as the local share, with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for well-being of the adult education program. I move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy, second by Counselor Menthorn. Any discussion? Counselor Menthorn?
Yes, I moved to table this as well to six one.
Motion, motion to table has been made by Counselor Menthorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item L, set the fiscal year 2021 property tax due dates and interest rates. Counselor Johnston?
Under Title 36 MRSA, Section 505, a municipality may by vote determine the interest rate that shall apply to delinquent taxes committed during the taxable year until those taxes are paid in full. The treasurer of the state of being determined that the maximum rate of interest that can be charged for Title 36 MRSA, Section 505, Section 4, for the taxable year 2020, tax date 4/1/2020 is 9%. Therefore, for the fiscal year 2021 tax commitment, the maximum rate allowed is 9%. City council is elected to set an interest rate of 9% for the fiscal year 2021. Under Title 36 MRSA, Section 506, a municipality may set the interest rates for overpayment of taxes and authorize the prepayment of taxes. Therefore, we request that the city council set the interest rate 0% for the overpayment of fiscal year 2021 taxes and authorize the application of any prepayment of taxes directly to the tax account as they are received without having to pay interest on these prepayments. The tax payment due dates are as follows. First half due, 9/11/2020. Interest accruing from 9/14/2020. Second half due, 3/12/21. Interest accruing from 3/15/21. Amendments to easy pay due dates, continuation of the easy pay program for fiscal year 2021, with eight monthly payments starting September 14th, 2020 and ending April 14th, 2021. Be it ordered that the city council set the interest rate for delinquent fiscal year 2020 property taxes at 9%, set the refund interest rate of fiscal year 2021 tax payments at 0%, and authorize the tax collector to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed without having to pay interest on these prepayments, and to establish the due dates for tax payments as follows. Payments for the first half due on September 11th, 2020, with interest accruing from September 14th, 2020, and payments for the second half due on March 12th, 2021, with the interest accruing from March 15th, 2021. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston?
Second.
Second, second by Counselor Menthorn. This, just before we get into the discussion piece, this does not negate the waiver that the council already took up earlier this evening. This is just setting the rate for what it is, but the council has still waived those in, as you talk about in item D. So just so there's no confusion, Counselor Copeland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that we should start the interest accruing a week after their due. We're not even giving people three days, and I think that's unreasonable.
Do you wish to make an amendment?
I wish to make an amendment to increase the, the timeframe for interest accrual to one week. Second?
Counselor Johnston? Were you, were you second in that?
I was not.
Okay, okay.
I was second.
Okay, there's amendment by Counselor Copeland, second by Counselor Gunn. So now that it's open for discussion, Counselor Copeland, is that your hand from before? Did you want to speak on this? Counselor Johnston?
Yes, could we have the Finance Director speak to this? I'm just curious if there's a reason, a specific reason for why it's done the way it is.
Finance Director Salas, are you still with us, or?
Yes, I can speak to this item. I, I believe the rationale is similar to the due date for your credit card payment, that we appreciate and encourage citizens to pay their tax bill early, ahead of the due date. However, we can implement a longer grace period if that is what the council would desire.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas. Counselor Johnston, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Menthorn?
Yes, this is basically the next business day. These dates are Fridays, and then the following Monday, it begins to accrue. So, you know, it is what it is. I mean, if, if you don't pay your mortgage or whatever, it starts accruing. The day after the payment was due, they're going to start giving you interest on it. You know, you're going to have to pay more. So that late fee is the next business day. So all we're doing is following what I would consider common business practice.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. Counselor Archer, you had your hand up. Did you want to say anything?
It was the exact same statement about a Friday and a Monday.
Fair enough, thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment only? The amendment to amend interest rates accrual to one week after due date on the amendment only? Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
No.
And Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
And Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
And Counselor Menthorn?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion fails two five. Back to the main motion made by Counselor Johnston and second by Counselor Menthorn. Any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing no further discussion and no councilors seeking recognition, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item N, reconfirm the authority to apply tax payments to the oldest outstanding tax. Counselor Copeland?
On October 6th, 1986, the city council approved a tax collection policy which allowed the treasurer or the tax collector to apply tax payments received from an individual to the oldest unpaid tax bill first. We would like to reconfirm the existing policy with the onset of a new tax year. Tax collection policy. The municipal officers of the city of Saco have approved the request of the municipal treasurer and the tax collector that any tax payment received from an individual is payment for any property tax, personal property, and sewer user fees, be applied against outstanding or delinquent taxes due on that property in chronological order, beginning with the oldest unpaid tax bill. Taxes may not be applied to a period for which abatement request or appeal has not been resolved unless approved in writing by the taxpayer. Also, on the 30-day lien notice or 45 to 30-day foreclosure notice, a statement will be added indicating the city's tax collection policy. And in our packet is an exhibit, which is Title 36 MRSA, Section 906. City staff recommends that the city council approve the tax collection policy pursuant to that 36 MRSA, Section 906. Be it ordered that the city council accept the tax collection policy as presented pursuant to Title 36 MRSA, Section 906. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Copeland. Any, any second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Seeing no hands raised and no councilors seeking recognition, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
And Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. We are through the action items with the exception of item G, which is the city operations budget main motion. Can we, at this point, we'd like to check in with Finance Director Salas and see where we are with the amendments that she was working on.
Hi, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am about five minutes out.
Okay. With that, is there any objection to moving forward with new business and administrative update? If there's no objection, uh, we have no new business, but, uh, we have an administrative update that the Administrator Kinnra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Senior Programs, this past week, we held our eighth event. We did again approximately 250 meals, which is fantastic. Our next event will be this Friday, May 29th, uh, 11:00 to 12:30, uh, same place. Again, thank you, as always, to everyone involved. Um, our COVID-19 response, um, as many of you know, under the current executive order through May 31st, 2020, municipal facilities, with the exception of transfer station, uh, are closed to the public through the end of the month. Um, you may wonder why I repeat this in every one of my reports, but we, on a daily basis, still have folks knocking on the door of City Hall and wondering what's happening or what the schedule is. So I think it's important just to keep putting this out there and keep everyone updated, um, because there are going to be changes in the near future, starting, uh, next week, the first of June, uh, City Hall will be reopened by appointment only. So that's by appointment only. Uh, citizens are encouraged to call the main line of City Hall, uh, and select, uh, from the phone tree of the respective department and, uh, which, which you wish to make an appointment with, um, and they will, uh, schedule you from there. This is very important to do, um, as there are a number of people who have lots of business at City Hall, uh, with us being closed to the public for the last number of months, um, and we need to prevent the, um, stampede, I'll call it, on the building, um, once we reopen. So, um, by appointment only through the month of June, um, you will notice that we will have, uh, a, a traffic flow mark on the floor downstairs. We will have, as you see in the grocery stores, um, social distance accepted spacing, so where you should stand, uh, and you'll notice the addition of many new glass barriers and customer service counters, um, to protect our staff and the public. So those are all, uh, changes you'll see. We will do this at least through the month of June. Uh, once we hit the next phase of reopening, uh, per the governor's order on July 1st, we may consider, uh, fully reopening our doors, but we will, uh, we will take this week by week and see how it goes. I'd also, again, like to put out there, of course, our COVID, the city's COVID-19 hotline for any assistance or questions you may have, uh, is 207-294-2436. Please call us if we can provide, uh, any help to you. I'd like to thank the fire department for their invitation, uh, over this past week, last week. Um, to me, they had, um, EMS appreciation week, and there was lunch provided for four days, um, for each of the shifts down at the central firehouse. Uh, they invited me to all four days. The mayor joined for some of those days also. So thank you to them, uh, for their invitation, for lunch. Uh, I was honored to join you, and of course, thank you to all of our first responders, everyone involved, for all the work they do on a daily basis, especially in this time of pandemic. We appreciate you. Uh, we know you're on the front lines, and thank you for all that you do. And again, I was, uh, honored to join you, so thank you very much. Uh, a reminder on our elections, our election has been moved from June until July 14th. Um, nomination papers, uh, the deadline for that has passed. We have our slate of candidates. Um, we are encouraging folks to take advantage of absentee balloting, but please do it, uh, if you can, by mail rather than coming to City Hall, so you can call the clerk's office, request an absentee ballot, um, it will be sent to you and you can mail it back. We will, for those who do want to visit City Hall in person, have stations set up, but again, we're encouraging you to do it by mail, to keep as many people, uh, out of the building for the time being as possible. Uh, those absentee ballots are available, uh, starting June 15th. So, and of course, please vote in the election, um, on July 14th. Uh, thank you. Have any second questions?
City Administrator Kinnra, thank you very much. We have a councillor, uh, Councillor Copeland has a question for you.
Thank you.
Are masks required of the public when they visit City Hall?
Good point, thank you. We are strongly encouraging, uh, people to wear masks, um, as, uh, as with many other communities in this, it's not, uh, absolutely mandated or required, but we are strongly, mostly strongly encouraging you, uh, to wear a mask if you do visit City Hall, please.
Thank you.
Any, uh, any other questions or comments for City Administrator Kinnra? Thank you, Brian. With that, uh, I hope, hopefully that ate up the five minutes that Finance Director Salas needed to, uh, get up to speed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am, uh, sending, I'm sending this to, um, I'm sending this to the whole council so that everyone can see it, because it's quite a lengthy amendment, um, and I believe, uh, Councillor Johnston wished to put forward the amendment. Um, I do want to give a special shout out to Denise Plavat, our Planning and Economic Development Director, who, uh, really stepped up when we first put out the call for additional savings and helped us identify these items in the budget.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas. Councillor Johnston, when you have that email, uh, we will have that amendment. Councillor Menthorn?
Uh, in the meantime, starting at 5:00 AM, we have a severe weather statement for a dense fog advisory. So, everyone out there, be safe on your morning commute if you're commuting.
Thank you for that update. Why don't we take a, a five-minute recess to allow, um, to allow for some work to be done, uh, and we'll come back in five minutes. Five-minute recess, beginning, uh, 9:48. At this motion, uh, or at this moment, uh, Councillor Johnston, do you have a motion?
I haven't received it yet.
Okay. Finance Director Salas?
Oh, I apologize. Maybe I use, um, I used a council email, but I think there's a couple of them. All right. I apologize. For some reason, I didn't send, so I'm going to try this again. Maybe I'm using the wrong email.
I just received.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, can I go ahead, Mr. Mayor?
You can.
I would like to put forward an amendment to the city administrator's budget to move qualified general fund expenses to the downtown development TIF district. Be it ordered that the city council decrease a 25% prorated portion of assessors' office supplies by $225. Decrease a 25% prorated portion of assessors' travel by $1,000. Increase a 25% prorated portion of assessors' computer supplies by $75. Increase a 25% prorated portion of the assessor advertising by $25. Decrease a 25% prorated portion of the assessor's deed services by $250. Increase a 25% prorated portion of assessors' computer software by $3,025. Increase a 25% prorated portion of the assessor's supervisory wages by $18,569. Decrease a 25% prorated portion of assessors' court officers' clerical wages by $26,211. Decrease a 25,000, or a 25% prorated portion of assessor clothing boot allowance by $50. Decrease a 25% prorated portion of assessors' training by $625. Decrease a 25% prorated portion of assessor dues and memberships by $50. Decrease a 25% prorated portion of assessor books manuals by $250. Decrease a prorated, a 25% prorated portion of assessor telephone by $600. Decrease a 25% prorated portion of assessors' postage by $275. Decrease a 25% prorated portions of assessors' printing by $125. Decrease planning and development benefits dental by $975. Increase planning and development benefits deferred comp by $3,394. Decrease planning and development benefits MEAPers by $6,028. Decrease planning and development benefits health and basic life by $25,314. Decrease planning and development benefits FICA by $21,131. Decrease planning and development benefits STLT disability by $1,716. Decrease a 10% prorated portion of Finance Director's salary, Finance Director's salary by $10,161. Decrease a 15% prorated portion of the city administrator's salary, uh, by $17,769. Decrease economic development operations books manuals by $250. Decrease economic development operations office supplies by $2,200. Decrease economic development operations computer supplies by 1,000. Decrease economic development operate, operations minor equipment by 1,000. Decrease economic development operations training by $2,875. Decrease economic development operations dues and memberships by, uh, $1,080. Decrease economic development operations telephone by $1,320. Decrease economic development operations postage by $1,000. by $1,320, decrease economic development operations postage by $1,125, decrease economic development operations travel by $1,875, decrease economic development operations advertising by $5,375, decrease economic development operations printing by $1,000, decrease economic development operations furniture and fixtures by $500, decrease economic development operations computer software by $3,000, and further be it ordered that the reductions be funded out of the downtown development TIF by reducing loans and products from $100,000 to zero and reducing the downtown facade program to $60,444. Move to approve the amendment.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. There's been an amendment made by Councilor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McPhail. And at this point, if there's no objection, I would like to bring forward the Planning and Economic Development Director Denise Clavett, if there are any questions for her. Andrew, can you promote Denise?
Hello, everyone.
Good evening and welcome, Denise. Thank you for joining us and thank you for the work that you're doing to help the finance director.
Hey, welcome.
Keep track of these things. The amendment that Councilor Johnston has put forward, there may be some questions, so I've asked that you be promoted in case the council has any questions for the, for that.
Sure.
With that, any discussion on the amendment that has been made by Councilor Johnston, second by Councilor McPhail? Councilor Archer?
Yeah, it's just more for clarification. This is, just want to know why this is being presented. That's a...
Want to know what?
Know why, just the why. It's the first, I think I've heard of this or saw it this way because we just got it in the email moments ago.
Thank you, Councilor Archer. Councilor Johnson might be the one that's better equipped to answer the why he's bringing this forward. So, Councilor Johnston?
The why is to, you know, use TIF funds to help offset general fund expenditures, thereby, you know, hopefully reduce the mill rate. These are qualified expenses. This was originally laid out to us in the memo that we received back on May 1st, I believe. At that time, I must have glazed over because I didn't really notice it until this morning when I was going back through the paperwork and realized that it had been presented to us. So, I had asked earlier today to have this motion prepared. I don't know what the total is, but I believe it's close to 160,000 of qualified expenses, so.
It's about 160,444, and I also believe that when Glennis did the calculations, as we've been managing the mill rate calculator, it also reflects a reduction, and even greater savings on the, the amount that's the extra expense of TIF that you talked about earlier today with the 315,000, because the mill rate will be lower, and so the expected transfer will be reduced by that amount of money.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston, Councilor Archer, and Denise. Denise, how will this affect your, your department?
You know, in actuality, our department, it won't affect us terribly. I think the key point here is that it's, it's an administrative nightmare, for lack of a better word, because you have to basically charge back every single line item that Nathan mentioned in his amendment means that, you know, if you're traveling, if it's a travel line item, X amount will come out of this account, X amount will come out of TIF, so administratively, it might be cumbersome. For my department, who manages all of these funds, not so much, but when you start looking at managing those accounts in other departments like assessing and payroll and a lot of these other factors, it becomes a little bit more cumbersome. But other than that, it has no real effect on the quality of service or anything. The only difference is that we will just take the two items that I have proposed not to be funded in the FY21 budget out of the TIFs, which, you know, at this point in time is probably the most palatable area to reduce in order to fund it this way.
Thank you, Denise. Councilor Copeland, you had a question? No? Any, any further questions, comments? Okay. Denise, thanks for, thanks for joining us. And with that, to call for a, any last minute discussion? If not, we'll go for a roll call vote on the amendment. And that, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The amendment passes 7-0. Do we have any further amendments that counselors would like to bring forward to the city administrator's budget? I believe that we're through the amendments that are in the agenda. And any additional amendments, Councilor Menthorn?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On my, of item G on page 196, we have not voted the final numbers that would be the fill in the blanks on page 210. My suggestion would be to table this item, which will allow the chief financial officer to double check her numbers, get everything in order, catch any possible mistakes there might be on a night like tonight, and table this till June 1st, at which time, when we move forward with the school budget, hopefully, we can address both of these at that time. I do have a motion and a resolve. The amendment would be to table this item G and move a resolve pushing a date that has already been amended for the budget from May 4th to May 26th. I have a resolve to move that now to June 15th.
So, on the, on the main, on the main motion here on item G, you're, you're making a motion to table, you're making a motion to table and then have a resolution to adopt the budget next week along with the school?
Correct.
Or basically to extend the, our, the previous resolution out till next week to allow time for us to do a consolidated budget approval. Because of the tabling of the school budget, you can't do a combination combined municipal budget adoption. So, the idea here is to, if I'm following you correctly, just so everyone at home can follow us as well, we're, we're making an amendment to table and, and then move our resolution, our already current resolution till June 1st.
We are making a motion to table G to let the final numbers fall where they may get the final mill rate calculator out for counselors to review. Because we have the extra time since the school has not sent the budget back to us, and I have a resolve that extends for two additional weeks, the current extension of three weeks that we already approved in, to modify the charter, so this would bring it out a total of five weeks that we are extending our budget period.
Mr. Mayor?
City Administrator Kendra.
Yeah, I just wanted to add further clarification that that, the resolve is, so not later than June 15th. June 15th is an important date because we need that 30 days in order to get the ballots printed for the election. So, the resolve just simply gives us until the drop dead due date of June 15th, but it's honor before June 15th.
And so that is your motion?
And I'll be happy to read the resolve into the record.
So, the motion has been made by Councilor Menthorn to table the city operations budget main motion and further move to amend our current resolution on the adoption of the city budget to honor before May, or excuse, excuse me, honor before June 15th. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has now been made and seconded made by Councilor Menthorn, seconded by Councilor Copeland. There is no discussion on this as it's a table and motion. With that, roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
And Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
And Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to table until next week. With that, we are moving from the action items as we are through the agenda and moving on to item 12, which is council discussion and comment. Any council have anything to discuss or comment on? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank all of city staff that's, you know, got us through this whole process. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm not a huge fan of this whole Zoom meeting thing to begin with, and, and it really has gone, you know, fairly smooth. And, you know, in addition, like I said, particularly with today's request for, for amendments to the budget, I would like to thank both Denise Clavett and Glennis, our finance director, for their, their efforts to get this all put together today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Councilor Copeland?
I have two things. First one is, can we see where the mill rate is right now? And then the second one is a question. Have we heard anything from the school board? I mean, is it just radio silence? Has there been any discussions? Why they haven't submitted a budget?
The school board did not meet next, did not meet this past week, so therefore they did not take up our, our basically sending back the budget last Monday night. As I understand, there is a school board meeting tomorrow night. I'm hopeful that they will take some sort of action. But it, it's for them to decide at their next meeting.
I, I, I feel so disrespected that they didn't do anything to, to get the budget going here. I mean, we, the council has put their full effort into this. The city staff has been incredible with all these things and all these cuts, and they just, I'm, I'm very disappointed, I have to say.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland and Finance Director Salas. Can we put up on the screen the mill rate calculator? Or Brian, can you share that?
Certainly. I'm going to share my screen now.
Thank you.
Can everyone see the mill rate calculator?
We can see the mill rate calculator.
Okay, so where we have landed after all of the amendments, you can see down here at the bottom, removing Sacco Main Street, moving those supported entity requests once one time, and then kind of eliminating just those new supported entities, the reduction of the joint projects with Biddeford, and the migration, the big amendment, that migration of qualified expenses to TIF funds. One thing that is a little bit tricky with TIF transfers is that they are a function of the mill rate and valuation. So, we've brought our mill rate down from, at one point in time, we thought it was made $20.50. Now, we're looking at $20.06. So, that means that very large increase in TIF transfers that I talked about the start of the evening actually has come down a bit. So, with all of these amendments, we are currently at $8.07, which is just a four cent increase on the mill rate, or potentially an increase of about 76 cents per month for the median household value.
Thank you for the update, Finance Director Salas. Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can hear it again. I believe this is the fourth time I've said it publicly, have not directed the school board to do anything, but I've said it natively four times. When we first met at the very beginning of this process, I asked them to be wary on projected revenues. However, those numbers have not changed since June. Again, I still do not see a $900,000 increase in revenue coming from the state of Maine. That, that comes out to almost 14 million. It's, it, again, I don't want to identify what that is because the school department has a better insight, but that 900,000 was identified in January. January feels like June of last year. That was a long time ago and a lot of things have changed, and for us to still see this 900,000 in anticipated increased revenue is, is still concerning to me. Again, I mentioned at the very beginning to be conservative on revenues, and I did see that the main care, they cut that in half, so I was pleased on that. But again, I'm not seeing a $900,000 increase coming from the state, and we're putting it into our bu, and we're not putting into the budget, but it's being put into the budget. And I have a lot of concerns because how are we going to make up what the state doesn't do? And if we're not being conservative on their EPS allocation, which they did send a form, I saw the form back sent in January, but January was a different time. New data suggests a new change, and how you look at it. COVID was not, we were not thinking anything related to COVID in, in, in January, and here we are in almost June, and it's the same number, and I'm just very concerned with that. And I have not really talked about, talking about their expenses. My concern's based on their revenue projections. That's it. And I haven't seen it change at one bit, and that's my concern.
Thank you, Councilor Archer. Councilor Menthorn?
Could we have Glennis share the mill rate calculator back up?
Sure.
Again, if we could.
Finance Director Salas, would you be so kind?
Can you see it on my screen?
You can see it.
So, what, so Glennis, my question to you is this. Looking at the school board's agenda for tomorrow, or Wednesday, whatever, and I guess it is tomorrow is Wednesday, I don't see anything on their agenda reflecting, addressing the fact we rejected their budget. So, if we get to a point where they don't send it back to us, then we adopt, I presume, their 2020 budget rolls over into the 2021 timeframe, and they go from the 29 or 28 million number we have here in column I or J back to their 26 million number in column E. Is that correct?
Well, I, I hate to speak in terms, definitively in terms of budget adoption and process, but my understanding is that if no budget is adopted, the prior year does roll over. Alternatively, council does have the ability to amend down the cost centers as submitted by the school board, if that's a path the city council would like to take.
Well, if, if we don't approve their budget and they don't submit it, they get their 2020 number of 26 million and change. And I think a whole lot of their staff are going to be very unhappy if that's the case. So, I, I hope they figure out that they basically have the next two Mondays to get their life in order.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to-
Councilor Menthorn?
Thank you. I just wanted to provide some food for thought. There were questions when I was going through the bond rating call about our budget approval process and the collaboration between the city council and the school board. So, whatever methodologies and strategies to arrive at a good budget, I think, is going to be important for the city to maintain its seller credit rating into the future.
Glenis, thank you for that. Thank you for that insight. And hopefully, we can continue to work on our communication between the two boards and coming up with a budget this year and in future years that work for the community. Council Arch?
Yes, I was going to say, while Glenis has her calculator up, when you had that up, is it possible to take the, again, let's just see what the 28 million to 2020 approved school budget? Sorry, I was looking at the wrong one, 26. And can you put that into this calculator to see what the mill rate could look like?
If we were to put the approved amount from fiscal year 2020 into the 2021 budget, that would be, that would actually be a reduction of the school mill rate, simply because there is some valuation increase year over year, which wouldn't be reflected if a flat year-over-year school budget amount.
So, we would drop 34 cents on the mill rate if the school does not come back to us?
That is where we would be. A concern I have, again, is that the school did not stay within the $26 million budget. In fact, we are looking at a deficit of $700,000. So, when there's a deficit, because the school shares the checking account with the city side, they can spend in a deficit. And the more significant the deficit becomes, the more the city loses its own unassigned fund balance, because that unassigned fund balance, a piece of it is broken off to support school deficits. So, I think thought should be considered towards, can the school truly operate within this budget? And what controls would be in place for them to have a budget that they feel that they can stick with? I think the rationale last year was the school ended the year with a surplus of 1.1 million, and so, an extremely conservative budget was possible. But if they're to end this fiscal year in a deficit of 700,000, this extremely low budget could be financially risky.
Well, again, from my perspective, I'm just looking for them to come back with adjusted revenues, more realistic revenues, not to go this approach, but I did want to see, since we had the calculator, what would happen under the model that Councilor Menthorn presented, not the one that he suggested, but the one he presented.
Yes, so I can send a copy of this out to the council, and you can enter various numbers into this school budget amount to see sort of where the school mill rate would fall.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas. That was a question that Councilor Copeland had. If the mill rate calculator could be sent out to the council one last time. So, thank you for addressing that issue.
Certainly.
Councilor Copeland?
One question about the school budget and keeping it back to the approved from last year. The state has unfunded mandates, and that has to be addressed. We can't just ignore that. You know, there's a minimum salary for teachers at 40,000 and so forth. So, whatever those state unfunded mandates are, we should find out how much they are, and we should add that to whatever was their last budget, in my opinion.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Along those same lines, I just want to point out that that 26 million that was approved last year does not include the 1.1 million use of the surplus. So, in reality, their approved amount was 27.1 or so. So, I would think that, or I suspect that the school board will be discussing this and likely, you know, trying to further reduce their budget. I mean, I don't know that for a fact. I submitted several suggestions last week. They seem to at least take them into consideration, at least the central office. So, I'm hopeful. I'll put it at that. You know, I do believe that they're not just going to turn around and come back to us with the exact same thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Any further council discussion and comment? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is why I wanted to present this and piggyback off what Council Copeland and Council Johnson says. If you don't present us the budget and we're forced to go this route, it's a very difficult route. And all I'm asking is just for you to relook at the budget with COVID in mind. Because we do not want to go that route. That's a very drastic route. But I mean, if we don't pass a budget, then that's what happens. And unfortunately, that's how the system process works. And we just have to be cognizant of that and just come to a amend what was presented, because we've kicked, I don't want to say kicked it back, but we postponed it three times now. And there's, with the ability to postpone it two more times, based on this new resolution to extend for a couple of weeks. So, I would definitely like to wrap this process up in a fair manner and move forward.
Councilor Copeland?
If the school board continues to disrespect us and ignore us, what can we do? Like, so if we need to know what the unfunded state mandates are, and they refuse to tell us what they are, I'm just so frustrated. I don't understand. This is such an important thing, and that they're not communicating is beyond comprehension. I guess I'm talking to the wall because they're not going to listen. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. I don't know that they're not listening. As I said, I think it was just they did not have a meeting last week to put it on their agenda and discuss it. Hopefully, they do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, and they do have adjustments on the agenda, and hopefully, they take that up in their, you know, in their agenda.
Well, you know, it just, you would think that with how important it is, you would think that maybe they would call a special meeting. It's been sent back to them. You know, I don't understand this, and I don't think I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Councilor Johnston, you had your hand up. Did you want to say anything?
Well, I was going to just pretty much reiterate what you said, which is, to be fair to them, they didn't have a meeting scheduled, so the board themselves couldn't really meet on this. I do believe that the central office did spend some time this weekend, you know, being prepared to present some ideas to the school board, hopefully, tomorrow.
Thank you for that.
Just wondering why they didn't come in and say that tonight. There were school board people in this meeting, so I don't know why they couldn't say that.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Any further discussion or comment under council discussion and comment? Seeing none, moving on. There is no executive session item tonight. So, no report. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Menthorn?
I think to be on the safe side, we should read this resolve into the record and vote on it as a council?
We are past the action items at the moment, Councilor Menthorn. We are now at the moment where we adjourn this meeting if there's a motion.
I understand that, but we didn't officially read this in, that extended the time for two weeks, and we didn't take a vote on it. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't do that.
If I got your motion correct, Councilor Menthorn, when you made the tabling motion and to amend the resolve to be on or before June 15th, you were amending the previous resolution approved by council, and that tabling motion and such was voted on 7-0 by this council to do so.
Okay, thank you so much. Just wanted to double-check.
That's what I have from my notes. If there's any objection to my notes, I'm more than happy to entertain going back to the action items, if that's what a council would like to do. But I believe it is pretty secure in the notes, the intent of the motion you made.
Very good. Thank you. And I'll move to adjourn.
Motion's been made by Councilor Menthorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Discussion, seeing none. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Hi.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. We are adjourned at 10:33 PM. Again, I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work and being here tonight and going through this budget process on Zoom, because it's a little bit different than being in council chambers and being together. But I just want to thank everybody for their hard work, and especially city staff for preparing all these documents. So, thank you. Be well and stay safe.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.